Yes, sir, Mayor. Today, we want to talk about the ordinance 551 that's coming up at the regular meeting in reference to the floodplain management and the minimum base flood elevation. We had a brief discussion in our last meeting, so what we want to do today is try to answer any questions that anybody may have in reference to this, so we can make a good decision on the ordinance 551. We've got Mr. Bo Kriel here from the building department. We also have Mr. Darryl Walker from FEMA, very knowledgeable. Maybe it would be good to start with him if he would, just kind of give us an overview of what we're looking at with floodplain management and hazard mitigation.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Just state your names for the record.
So my name is Darryl Wayne Walker, and I work for FEMA. I'm a hazard mitigation specialist with the floodplain management insurance group. First of all, I guess we ought to talk real quick about how we got into this deal in the first place. You know, with government, everything's quick, broke, closed, something for something. So long ago, we seemed like we were going back to the same places over and over and responding to disaster events. So 1968, they called the National Flood Insurance Program to put insurance in place for those communities that are in the high-risk areas. Along with this, about 1974, they started coming out with big maps on the floodplains and so forth to identify those areas. So what the quick, broke, close part is, we have the communities to enact regulations to regulate the building in those high-risk areas. In exchange, we make the National Flood Insurance Program available in those communities for homeowners, renters, and business owners. And over time, it's worked out very well. Everything that we have with FEMA and our recommendations, our regulations, and our math is a minimum standard, is the absolute least that can be, the least level of compliance is to be considered safe. I always said, it's kind of like, if you want to build a house right there where you're at, sir, there's a 1% chance in any given year that it'll flood and need to be, the minimum standard says the top of your lowest floor has to be at least knee-high. Well, that sounds like the regulation, but I don't think that's me. Well, if that's where it can get to, and a 1% chance in any given year, my floor joists, my insulation, everything underneath my floor is going to be wet also. Our weather events tend to exceed that sometimes. And that's where we encourage the communities, based on what their situations are, to also adopt higher standards. Your community is part of the CRS program, Community Rating System, and out of that, you've already adopted some higher standards than the state of Florida has. And I believe, what is your current CRS rating there?
That's what we were just discussing earlier.
Ten.
A ten?
Yes. The city's a ten.
Okay. A ten? Well, I'm not sure absolutely sure if y'all already formally entered the CRS, because a ten would be no discounts, and nine would be a 5% discount on all flood insurance policies. And for instance, Bay County over next door, they are a CRS five. Everybody in that, in the unincorporated areas of the county gets 25% discount on their flood insurance premiums because they've enacted higher standards and go above and beyond those minimum requirements. Those higher standards are not just in the form of free board. It's always good to get above and beyond what that risk level is. Also, other things can be done, lower thresholds on the substantial damage determinations, lower than 50% for that damage trigger. There's need of education and outreach pieces that they get credit for in the program. But we always encourage everyone to go above and beyond with those standards. And I've got a lot of knowledge on this stuff. One of the best things to do is just bring me a few of the questions, is y'all have them, and go from there.
I know a lot of the questions still are this 50% rule. Can you explain to the public? I know quite a few of them are here, wanting to know whether they have to tear down or whether they can rebuild with the half.
Okay. And so the way that reg, I'm sorry, I have my back turned here. The way that regulation works is, when the program went into place, the houses were already here. Any house built before, say, whenever y'all's first map came out around '74 or something like that, those houses were already there. We call those pre-firm. The map is a flood insurance rate map. That's where the firm acronym comes from. So houses built before that time were subsidized or basically grandfathered into the program. It was okay if you were below that base flood elevation, but the trigger, the regulatory trigger would be, if your home is damaged 50% or more, that's the cost to repair the home will exceed 50% of the pre-storm fair market value. That's where the trigger comes in. If you hit that trigger, you have to bring the home into compliance with the current floodplain management regulations. So there's four main ways that mitigation is achieved. If it's a non-residential, you can look at floodproof under commercial properties. That's wet floodproofing or dry floodproofing. Wet floodproofing would allow the water to pass through, and you use shelves and so forth to get your equipment off the ground. That's usually in areas where the flooding is anticipated to be less than three feet. Dry floodproofing would require an engineering certification to say that we're going to create an envelope around this building, a watertight envelope, let the water rise on the outside, put temporary dams at the doors, floodgates and so forth. But it'd have to have engineering to show that it was standing to high static pressure that'd be created, so it didn't collapse. And then the other three methods are relocation of the structure to a lower hazard area, elevating the structure, or demolish or rebuild. I remember that by the acronym FRED, floodproof, relocate, elevate, or demolish. So that trigger is a tough spot. I mean, most of us haven't got the money to reach in our pocket and pull out to start elevating houses and so forth. But on the other hand, you can end up stuck in a really bad situation, kind of like on the back of a shampoo bubble, rinse and repeat, rinse and repeat. We have certain homes that repetitively flood, that are, you know, the lowest ones that are in the highest-risk areas and so forth. So there's different funding streams out there that could possibly be accessed. One of those is the state's hazard mitigation grant program, driven by our disaster funds. And there's also a possibility on structures that flood, that they could get assistance through FEMA's flood mitigation assistance program. In this instance, though, with substantial damage, if the structure's located in the floodplain, and it's not compliant with the current regulations, substantial damage is from any source, any origin. So that could be fire, that could be wind, you know, any origin on that. It can also be from substantial improvement. For instance, if I have a $100,000 home, and I want to do a $70,000 add-on and refurbishment of my home, I'm getting, I'm into the substantial improvement side of the program. So that opens up another can of worms. If my $100,000 home is damaged, and I've got $45,000 worth of damage, the cost to repair, I'm not at that threshold. But I want to add on a room, I want to use higher-grade materials going back, I could push myself over that threshold also. Now, if you have...
I've got one other question. You mentioned determining the fair market value is the triggering event.
Yes.
What fair market value are you looking for? If you look on our tax rolls, it's one thing. If you look on the property appraiser page, it's another. If you ask an appraiser, it's a whole nother.
Okay.
What number does FEMA use to determine that?
Well, it comes down to those decisions are ultimately made by the local community. FEMA cannot determine if a property is substantially damaged, if the system's collecting the data, but the local community, the floodplain administrator, has to make that determination. It's acceptable to use appraisal data from the appraiser's side. It's acceptable to use those other forms of data that are available, but the key is to be fair and consistent. You don't want to use one standard for one person, one for another, and then you create a legal situation. You want to use, be fair, be consistent, and that way, you've got a defendable decision to take back. Now, if you come to me, and you send me a letter that says I'm 55% substantially damaged, and I disagree with you, cost of business to fix my home's not going to be that high. I can come back to you with number one, a certified appraisal of my property, and number two, come back with licensed contractor estimates on what the cost of repairs is going to be. And of course, we'd expect to follow through that process, and I'm sure I didn't go above and beyond that, but maybe I come back that, well, I'm at 55%, maybe I come back that mine's going to be 48% to repair. Then I could appeal that decision to your board and possibly be able to repair it in kind.
So it can be appealed with the local engineer contractor and appraiser?
Yes.
Those are always, okay.
The other side, one other thing I wanted to mention, because most of this disaster is wind damage, but y'all do have a significant amount of flood and surge damage in the area here also. If you're damaged, if you have insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program, and your damage is from flood, and you're substantially damaged, that substantial damage letter that the community floodplain administrator generates will, is a trigger for a program within the National Flood Insurance Program called ICC, increased cost of compliance. That can be up to $30,000 to go toward achieving compliance on that property. Once again, floodproof, relocate, elevate, or demolish the destruction. $30,000 doesn't always, usually won't get you there on an elevation project. It might if you're a simple square, rectangular crawl space home, that can be elevated that way. But that money can also be used for matching funds in the larger grant programs, like the hazard mitigation grant program, which is a 75-25 match. It's not a duplication of benefits to use those ICC funds along for that match.
How does one apply for ICC funds?
The ICC funds would be triggered by your substantial damage letter. Then you would take that and go back to your agent that is servicing the claim, and tell them if you want to file for the ICC portion of the damage.
And you and I had spoke last week, and you recommended that we send those substantial damage letters to the special flood zones, which we thought, I mean, Jim, those were like 22 houses maybe affected by that?
Yes.
So what I would recommend to the public is, anybody that's in this situation needs to come to the city and ask for that letter. We're not sending them out automatically unless you're in that special flood zone.
And what we're encouraging is that the community look at inspecting those properties and send letters out both sides. If they are substantially damaged, they know that they hit that trigger, and they've got to work with that compliance decent, do that mitigation measure. On the other side, if I was your citizen, I would want to receive a letter. If I was not substantially damaged, to know that I could go ahead and receive my repairs in kind as I currently exist here. And I understand that today, you're discussing acting on adopting the new preliminary maps and also discussing a free board of additional one foot beyond the one foot that the state of Florida requires, which is two feet above those FEMA elevations on the map. Like I say, it's each community is unique. You have to assess your situation. There's pros and cons on both sides. I'm, of course, on the Dr. Pro side. Number one, I work for FEMA. Number two, I've been on over 75 disasters, and I've seen a lot of people get their lives washed away, some of those people more than once. Adopting those standards, what would it do? Well, your foot higher above the flood to start with. That's going to reflect directly on your insurance rates. If you do have flood insurance, you're going to have lower premium costs. And ultimately, in the long run, if I came to your community and I was looking to buy a home, knowing there's a flood history here, and we live on the coast, I'm going to be looking for the highest property I can find, the highest one off the ground. And so it's going to make you more marketable in the long run. If you do rebuild, the higher level you build will make you more marketable, ultimately making your structure safer and workable.
You said there was pros and cons. Will you speak on some of the cons?
Okay, on some of the cons, you may have folks that currently, their elevation is right at the mark. And by adopting the additional free board, they may be substantially damaged, but if they're right at the current elevation requirement, they'd be able to repair. That could trigger them having to elevate their home also.
An extra foot.
That extra foot. But they would need to meet the current regulatory mark, plus the current FEMA elevation, plus the state of Florida's one-foot elevation as a chance now by the existing maps. And by moving to adopt the new maps, I believe there are higher elevations than were there in the past, if I'm not mistaken.
Now, in our community, we have substantial flooding issues currently. We didn't need Michael's help. When we're already a distressed area, we don't have a master runoff, master storm runoff plan at this point. Would it make the problem worse if the neighbors started elevating their houses? I mean, is it going to exacerbate our current problem of flooding?
I don't see how it could make it worse on the drainage side, if you're putting the reconstructed properties and the mitigated properties at a higher level, low ground level.
But if the neighbors don't do the same?
Okay, that depends on the nature of the elevation. If it's done post-piers and piles, it would actually reduce the flooding impacts, to the best of my knowledge, as opposed to, and same thing with crawl spaces, you would have more, less displacement in your floodplain overall. If you done it on a stem wall box, you know, concrete box that filled with sand and a slab on top, that type of construction, that cumulatively, a lot of projects could have a different impact on your floodplain, have a negative impact.
Yeah. I just don't want to put the cart before the horse. Let's fix the problem and then move on from there.
Understood. And those are things, that's where the community, FEMA, the folks in Washington, it's around the nation, the state folks, nobody knows your community and the flood situation better than you do the local officials. One other thing I would like to point out is, sometimes there'll be areas that are not identified on the FEMA map, that you have a consistent flooding problem with. Maybe it's something that's been created over development over the years. And if you can, as a community coordinator, state coordinator, state unified coordinator, develop your own community map for those additional areas, if you feel that that is a significant risk area, and y'all want to develop that yourself. And also, you would look at having that addressed the next time there's a map revision done, to have it incorporated with our maps.
How often is the maps revisited and redrawn? I know right now, currently, there's a lot of talk about the new maps coming out. How often does that happen?
Less often than I would like to see it happen, but it's really, it's not exactly driven by storms or anything else. They try to look at the maps every five years. It's about a four-year process to get maps completely updated, especially now that we have capability like LiDAR that can fly over and give us a much better representation of what ground height actually is and so forth. But for instance, one thing on the maps, we will not review maps based on one specific sole event like this. Number one, it was beyond the 1%, or what we call a 100-year event. Number two, whenever they do these maps, they run hundreds of models of all different types of storm scenarios. So this storm would go in collectively, those models would be part of it happening. So the map elevations would likely not show the high watermark elevations that you saw in this picture.
Right, because the maps that we're currently looking at approving were all compiled pre-hurricane, Michael, correct?
Yes. Yes, that process started, I believe, about four years, five years ago.
That's my mistake.
But like I said, our maps are a minimum standard, it's the least you can get away with and be considered reasonably safe. And we encourage anything above and beyond that you would like to do, we would encourage that, but also strongly encourage that you coordinate making those changes through Mr. Steve Martin, your state NFIP coordinator. He runs a very good program in his state. Some of the most stringent building standards for coastal development in the nation are here in Florida. And I've seen so many lives destroyed and shattered, some of them more than once, that build higher, build stronger, be safer, you're going to be better off in the long run. Ultimately, I'm here, I do what I do, I've been doing this for 14 years. I just want to keep equals, keep driving the money in their pocket as much as possible.
Man, that's what our goal is, or mine, but you have to do that with the understanding. It's easy, in my mind, to say, yeah, if we adopt new regulations to have a better-built home, hire, that's easy on new builds. But we're faced with a lot of people that are currently trying to figure out the best way to rebuild. And I'm trying, in my mind, to figure out how we can help those people, and that's why I hope to hear from some of the people that are facing that problem today.
Understood. I know people don't have the money to do this, especially older folks on fixed steam tanks and stuff. And a lot of those homes, once the payments are paid off and everything, if you're not in that highest-risk flood area, you may think that there's not a need to maintain flood insurance. Your agent may tell you, you need, it's not required. Well, it's not required, it's required when you have a federal note in a special flood hazard area. But what I've always said, people ask me if they need flood insurance, I ask them a question, can it rain there? If it can rain there, it's probably a good idea. 25% of our policies are paid in what we call the X zones outside of the special flood hazard areas. And I've seen everything from localized heavy downpours to top of a mountain, and the end of the cul-de-sac, the lowest house consistently was flooded because drainage issues, or not considered development.
Would making this one change, this elevation of one foot by itself, affect a lower score for us, for NFIP to show people some insurance savings? Or would it take a lot more than just this?
Very possibly. I would defer, I would ask that we speak with the state NFIP coordinator, and also my supervisor, Mr. Roy McClure, who's going to be returning back to Atlanta here at the end of this week. He is the CRS coordinator for the state of Florida also. So I can't get you an answer on that. If it doesn't get you that, entering the CRS program in good stead, and then that and a few other activities, maybe as simple as community education and outreach, but additional information on your websites and so forth, should be able to get you from a 8, a 10, Joe, 9, and get that first 5% discounts. Most of the communities in state actively engage with the state or CRS 8 or lowers at this point, so 10% or better discounts on their flood insurance premiums. One more thing I'd like to throw out there. A home that was deemed to be substantially damaged, let's say that, for whatever reason, it got missed in the inspection process, but it had flood insurance. The flood insurance claim paid on the home, it was a $200,000 home, there was a $170,000 flood insurance claim paid on. Whether the community caught that for the regulatory piece or not, at some point, the NFIP would look at that and would say, based on the claim and the replacement cost value, it indicates that the structure was substantially damaged. If there was any grandfathering or subsidized rate involved, that that could be moved to an actuarial rate. If that structure was three feet below base flood elevation, the insurance premium would be $7,000 a year, right? So that's another downside, and that's another people to make sure that these inspections are done, and we get the people a decision on which way they need to go, if they have to need the regulatory trigger, or if it's okay for them to repair in kind. And one thing, these are tough decisions to make, no matter what we do, it's going to negatively affect someone somewhere, and it's going to positively affect folks in other areas. But what can we do? Can we act now, or can we pass it forward to the next generation? Any questions?
Thank you for your...
I'm curious to see what those questions and comments are from the audience also. I'd be glad to address those.
Thank you, Kevin.
Come up front, please.
Bo Kriel, I'm building inspector for the city. Darryl, you had mentioned when you started there, that the substantial damage applied to pre-firm structures?
It would apply to all structures.
All structures, okay. You said pre-firm, and that's what had me confused.
No, I thought it was, or is it a... All structures in the floodplain.
I thought it was, but I just wanted to make sure I hadn't read something wrong. Okay.
So structures that would not need to be inspected, or any that were built, since your current regulations went into effect? If they were compliant with the current regulations, would there be no compliance trigger? There are compliance.
And we got records of all those, yeah.
So those recent permissions, the structures, you would not need to look and inspect them?
Anything for me while I'm up here?
We get you back right away.
Okay.
I would like it this time, sir, if anyone in the public has any questions for you, that we go ahead and address that at this time. Does anyone either have questions, you want to come to the podium and ask any questions you might have? Oh, nobody? Anybody got their hand up?
Pat Hardman, President Coastal Community Association. And I just had a couple of questions. If you know the new maps, or the proposed maps that have been in process for the county about three years now, and those are based on new LiDAR. I was chair of that committee, and so was real familiar. Are y'all talking about using the present maps as they stand now? Or are you talking about using those new maps with new LiDAR? That's going to make a huge difference, because the new maps were already going to move a lot of people into a higher floodplain, a lower floodplain. So that's going to have a huge effect on this elevation situation you're talking about. So that was one question I had for you, is which set of maps are you going to use? I assume FEMA has to go by the old maps unless you take the new maps in, right?
We go by the current effective maps that are adopted at this time. If they adopt the new preliminary maps, to my understanding, any permits issued after that point going forward would comply with that new requirement.
As I understood it, Mayor, if I may, we went ahead and, we're going to go with the new maps, so we don't, in three months, have people that are out of compliance.
Yeah, we've already adopted the new maps.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Okay, so that does, just warning you, that does put a lot more people in your pool that are going to be stressed out.
We have not adopted the new maps. We did talk about it last meeting. The ordinance that's proposing next, regular meeting, would be for the new proposed maps, Dr. Pat, the ones that we've been working on together with the community.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clear that up, because that is going to impact a lot of people. And they need to know pretty soon, as they're trying to do things. A lot of your homes that are effective, of course, are those that have fixed or low-income. And moving, elevating a home is not as easy as it looks. Some of them can't be elevated, they just simply are not structurally built to be able to do that. Others, when you elevate, you've got several step processes, it's very expensive. You've got to get a house mover to come in, lift that baby up, hold it up in the air, move it out of the way. You've got to put a foundation down, which is one of the most expensive pieces of building a house. Then you've got to put it back on top of it. So it's not just jack it up. I just, I just warning you, y'all don't have an easy choice here, mate, no matter what you do. I just brought those out.
Thank you, Ms. Pat.
I'm Lynn Marshall, and I live at 1206 Monument Avenue. And we're sort of one of the ones that are really confused about what to do. We live in a home that was my grandmother's home. She lived there for about seven, 60 years, a little bit more maybe, and never had water in her house ever, you know, the 60 years, until this storm came in and we got about five feet in our house. So what we've done is, we've gone through the house, taken everything out, you know, demoed it, hoping that we could rebuild the house. I recall Ducky Johnson to come give us a quote for elevating the house. It was $125,000 to elevate and put a structure and do the foundation into the house. We talked to several builders about, okay, if we had to tear it down and rebuild the house, what can we do there? And they're really hesitant to get its prices right now, as a matter of fact, because of all of the subcontractors, and they're trying to get their pricing together and that sort of thing. And they're, the number that they're feeling comfortable with right now is about $200 a foot to rebuild a house that has the windows that we would need and be elevated the way we would need it. And so our flood insurance, they were, they were fair with us, and they gave us, you know, a good settlement on that. One thing that we've learned is, we hear so many different things from so many different people. And we'll have, you know, our insurance person tell us, you're going to be grandfathered in on your insurance. You don't need to worry about your insurance going up. And then we have an adjuster tell, or an appraiser tell us, you need to be worried about the insurance, because that insurance could really, really go up a lot. I would hate to go in and be able to redo my house, and then my flood insurance go from $2,500, right, $2,500 a year to $7,000 or $8,000 a year. That, I would probably have been smarter to sell and move somewhere else, or just build a new house. I'm real hesitant to do anything, because I don't know what the steps are. And that's what I kind of need to know, are what are, now that my house has been gutted, do I, do I now go to get an elevation certificate, or do I go get an appraisal? I don't know what the steps are.
My suggestion, ma'am, would be the first thing I would say is to get an elevation certificate to know exactly where you stand. Is that lift going to be one foot, three foot, five foot? You're not going to know until you get that elevation certificate exactly how high you're going to have to come up. Another thing I want you to consider is, if you went to the, you got the FEMA base flood elevation, then you've got the one-foot additional Florida requirement, and if they adopt the additional free board here of another foot, that puts you two foot above FEMA's base flood elevation. The base flood elevation from FEMA is what the insurance rates are driven by, not the additional free board in the community. The insurance is rated by what the flood map says and where you sit in relation to that base flood elevation as far as insurance goes. If you went to the base flood elevation, plus the two foot that they may adopt, and added two more feet on top of that, you're getting up there, you're four feet above that FEMA base flood elevation, I think you'd be paying much less than the $2,500 a year that you're currently paying on insurance. And I can also get you connected with one of our insurance specialists, or you could call the 1-800-FEMA registration number, and either listen for the prompt or ask to speak to a NFIP specialist, and they can talk to you more directly about getting you quotes on what that would be if you elevated higher than what's required.
Okay, so if I kept, if I keep, if I was able to keep current, then the knowledge, the information I got about that I would be grandfathered in, and my insurance wouldn't go up, is probably not grand.
Grandfathering in doesn't sound right to me. The agency's trying to move away from grandfathering overall. And it sounds like you're substantially damaged too, with five feet of water, the cost to repair, and what you've gutted out is going to probably exceed 50% of the market value of the structure. Now, when we talk about that market value, we're talking about the structure only, not the land value, or any outbuildings or anything, just that primary structure that we're looking at.
Can I just make a comment? I think what she's asking, that's a good question.
I think what she's asking, that would be a question.
You have to go up front.
Yeah, that's true. Phone ticket, I'm on Del County. What would trigger her losing her pre-firm policy? Can you go through those steps?
Substantial damage determination.
Which is 50%?
50% or more cost to repair.
She's under, she's under pre-firm now, so she's got, even $2,500 was a cheap insurance for the location and elevation she's currently at. So to lose that, she would, who would, if she didn't, if, what if she didn't do anything? Would the county, I mean, the city come in and determine, hey, or the FEMA would come in and determine that she was 50% even if she decided just to rebuild her house as is?
Number one, the city should inspect when she comes in for her permits and determine whether or not the structure that constitutes a substantial improvement during those repairs.
Okay.
Number two, based on what your insurance payout was, the NFIP may come back in the future and look at that payout versus your replacement cost and move you toward an actuarial rate.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, so I need to go, so the city, do I need to first get a contractor to come in and give me quotes to re, to refinish the house or rebuild the house before I'll go to the city? Or does the city come in and determine the 50%?
Okay. Like I say, still the first thing to do would be to get that elevation certificate. Number one, that's going to tell you what you can do with the house if you're going to be looking at possibly elevating, rebuilding, or if it might accidentally be at the current compliance level. That's a slim chance, but this was not a, within that 100-year event or that 1% chance in any given year. Find out, you've got to know where you're at before you know where you're going to go. If that makes sense. Once you get the elevation certificate, then that's time to go talk to your local flood line officials and your community officials. Because you can have a general conversation with these folks, but without knowing having that elevation, that's the particulars that you're going to need to start to really engage in the conversation.
So you get the elevation certificate and then go to bed?
Yeah. It would be, my understanding that you guys are the substantial damage inspection.
Yes, now, we're going to assist with doing the substantial damage inspections for the city, but we're only going to collect the data. And what we do is we don't go out there and say, you know, your windows are worth this many dollars and your floor is worth this many dollars. We look at the building and what percentage of these 14 different building components we're looking at, what percentage is that component damaged? For instance, your roof, you know, half the roof's gone, we're already at 50%, you know, and so forth. We look at wall coverings, interior and exterior, floor coverings, built-in appliances, cabinets, things like that, doors and windows, those kind of things. And just to give you an idea, if the water hits the door knob on a house, okay, all the doors are gone, maybe the windows, if it got into the window, that's about door knob height. All of your lower cabinets are gone, your built-in appliances are pretty much done, maybe not the microwave over here. The other thing to think about on that, those are things that are considered in the substantial damage calculation.
Okay.
So those are elements that we look at. We look at a percentage of the damage and then the cost is driven by either your assessor's data on the value of the home or sometimes it's driven by the community development, say, cost per square foot for reconstruction and drives it all that.
Okay, and then there are grants that help if we would have to rebuild, if we had to tear it down and rebuild the house? Are there grants that help with the code?
Possibly, yes. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is one that is disaster funding, that we'll be funding coming from for this disaster. Doesn't happen quickly, it takes time. But that process starts by filing with your local emergency manager. You cannot, as an individual, apply to FEMA for that, but the county or city can apply on your behalf and you have to get to them and tell them what your situation is. One of the first keys on it would be a substantial damage letter.
Okay.
Darrell, you will learn just that information and then?
Yes, sir.
Then you'll come to us with your contractor estimates and we'll determine.
Okay.
In your situation where it is particularly flood damage, there also may be a possibility for our flood mitigation assistance grants also. We could possibly be able to work for your emergency manager once again to apply for those. Another thing here, sometimes our congressional leaders appropriate additional monies through CDBG disaster relief funds. Now, not the normal community development block grants that help with your roads and so forth, but this is specifically for disasters. That usually doesn't, conversation doesn't start until six or nine months after the event. After our other programs have done what they do, everyone's applied, then we're looking at these pool of people that didn't qualify for the programs that were existing and they look at what the unmet needs are and try to do CDBG appropriations to work with those unmet needs.
Okay, and so one of the things that we were starting with was we were getting a, an engineer to come see if the house is structurally sound. To me, that seems like that may be a waste of money to get them to come tell us that if, if they say, well, your whole inside's gone, it's not going to really...
And that's what it comes down to, having to work with either an engineer or a good construction person and look and you've got to pick your battle there. Is this house, first of all, is it structurally sound and is it technically feasible to save the house? And I know a lot of these, especially with family properties, there can be a lot of emotional attachment to them, sentimental attachment and so forth, but there are those points you have to make a decision. Do I elevate and restore or do I rebuild to the current level? Now, everything comes at a cost, but it's also an investment. What do you have when you get done in those two scenarios? Do you have this new top-of-line foundation elevating the old house up to where it needs to be or do you have a completely new home?
Okay, well, thank you, ma'am.
Wish best of luck, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wish to have any questions with a FEMA representative now? All right, we'll move on then, Jim.
That's the only thing we had around the workshop, secretary. If there's no other questions, then you prefer to entertain a question, a adjourn?
Oh, no more questions, adjourned.
Let's make sure there's no builders. Is there any builders that came, contractors that wanted to weigh in on this? I think it'd be beneficial to hear their side of how it would affect the rebuild especially.
I'm not a builder, I'm a designer, I have a question for him, but I do have a general question, ma'am. This is Jeff Harvey, homeowner of Airport St. Joe. For those houses that are more than a foot above base flood elevation on the current maps, so technically not within the application and they're already permitted, does the adoption, does the subsequent adoption of the new map, I know it could affect rates going forward, but do we need to be pumping the brakes on any rebuild? Because the last thing I want to do is get a third of my rebuild money spent. We have a new map and my permit is blowing in the wind. So I'm not trying to skate by on anything, but how does that work? Maybe, I mean, Mr. Kriel's here, we've got a FEMA rep here, I mean, there's a number of us that are in that. The new map pushes us real close or maybe beyond, we're just trying to figure out where we are. If we need to pump the brakes, let's pump them. And if we need to keep moving, families in a travel trailer and waiting for some number of months to find out about that if we're already permitted, that feels too comfortable either. And that's, that's a difficult scenario, but as of right now, if we're permitted and we're more than a foot above, we're ready to go, we got the elevation certificate, do we need to not add windows and not go above 50%? I mean, windows weren't wet, but while, while the rocks ripped, we might as well do. And then these are practical, so I mean, I appreciate you're here, but how does that work?
Okay. So the legal requirement is you will comply with what's in effect at the date you pull the permit. The common sense might be another issue, you know, look at how much water it got, you know, how, where does the person want to build it in a safety standard? The legal requirement is you comply with what's in effect at the time you pull the permit. When we're talking about the windows and so forth, I'd go to caution any builder to be very careful, especially if you're working with a home that's on the threshold of being substantially damaged by upgrading features like that, you may put it into a substantial improvement category and hit that regulatory trigger by adding additional features to the home or things that are not directly damaged by the flood. Conversely, if I was right at 49%, pushing that limit, and I wanted to make the option to not replace windows when they were damaged, that wouldn't be acceptable because that is part of restoring structures to a predisactored condition. You can't pick and choose and say, well, I'm not going to do the windows or I'm going to downgrade to the real cheap windows to save a little bit, 50%. You need, the, the estimate should be to restore the structure in kind and see if you hit the threshold in the process.
But purely from a Fred perspective, your acronym there, if we're, if we have a permit pulled and we're more than the one foot above our currently applicable map, understanding the risk of future premium increases, if the determination is that we can't possibly rebuild, tear down and rebuild a 2,200 square foot slab home, there's not any way that if we start rebuilding, that we're going to then get kicked in to having to elevate if we are currently permitted as to the proper elevation. I mean, I understand the risk there and I'm going to ask you to say they aren't there, but, but those are, that's another, for that unique circumstance, the map's the map as of the date the permit's pulled.
Right. I would encourage you to take a list of preliminary maps and see if there's going to be an elevation change that could potentially affect your insurance rates in the future.
Sure, I understand.
For instance, if there's a two-foot elevation change, increase on the new map plus the one foot, well, the free board state or locally required doesn't affect the insurance rates as far as the base of it. Now, the insurance is driven by how far you are above or below the FEMA base flood elevation on the map. Free boards aren't really taken into consideration, other than the aspect of if you built two feet above the FEMA base flood elevation, you would get a reduction in your insurance costs because you're above and beyond that minimum risk.
Thank you.
Darrell, could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Henry Darsh, what do you have to say? Now, the substantial damage, if we're less than 50%, as I understand what I've read, if you do a substantial improvement, which other items that maybe wasn't damaged.
Yes, sir.
And that is cumulative over a certain period of time. Is that correct?
Not, it can be. That's one of the higher standards that we talked about. Cumulative substantial improvement is one of the things that the CRS program encourages that you add into your ordinance. The base, the minimum language ordinance, the state model ordinance, it's based per event or per activity, basically, I think, within a one-year cycle or something like that. But a cumulative clause would say any improvements over a five or 10-year period, if they cumulatively add up and reach that 50% threshold, you would hit your regulatory trigger.
But that's not something we have to do in the ordinance, that's just, the state, the state rule is one year?
Um, yeah, per event or no more than, yeah, I mean, within a year cycle.
Thank you.
Any comment on that? No.
Again, but if those improvements are done now under a currently issued permit, you wouldn't get into a cumulative issue. The cumulative issue might come up in that scenario if you then decide to do a remodel in six or, six or 12 months.
Right.
And you have a new map in place and then you potentially pull yourself with the application on new.
I have not been able to review the ordinance for this community. I'm not sure, I don't know if you have a cumulative clause already in place or not, but I don't believe that you did.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a builder in the back that wants to talk? Anybody?
My name's Keith Wingate, just got a couple.
Come on up front.
The biggest thing we've been getting calls about is people that, they call about, do they go ahead and knock it down or not knock it down? We've heard this a hundred times. If they knock it down and the insurance has to come back, you know, what do you do? You know, where, where does that stand as long as the insurance, which I don't have the answer to that, obviously. But the other thing is, how much is it to tear it down and they don't want to get caught in the situation of, because tearing it down and putting it in the yard versus tearing it down onto the landfill is a huge swing. And we don't, and the biggest thing is how long can you, do you have to put it in the yard and will it be, how long will it be picked up if you know, demo and put it there? Costs a price of about a $15,000 to $20,000 swing going from the yard to the landfill with it. And we don't, and we don't get one to tell them. That's, that's the biggest thing we've been getting is, so.
Jim, you know how long they're going to be picking up debris up?
Right now, there's not been a deadline set at this point in time there. So whether people are, they can push it to the road right now if it's residential, if it's on a state highway, it's a different issue because you have different contracts picking it up. But they are still working. There is going to be a deadline set at some point. We do not have it yet, so we do not. So the sooner the better. And as soon as we get that information as to a deadline on there, we want to get it to the board, we want to get it out to the public as quick as we can. At this point, there's not been a deadline set.
See, I understand that, which, like I said, the biggest thing is people worried about when they haven't collected their insurance, they tear it down and then the insurance comes back and they go, okay, we need to look at one more thing. Well, is it worth the difference going, tearing, you see what I'm getting at?
There's going to be some, I'm sure they're going to get caught in that threshold, but at some point, we're going to have to set a deadline at some point if we don't have it yet.
Set deadlines.
We're going to try to do it as long as we can to allow help, people, so.
And then I got, guess a question.
One other comment on that, I would encourage the community to visit with their public assistance representatives on this, that are working on your infrastructure and so forth, also working with your debris and have a good conversation about that. If I'm not mistaken, commercially generated debris is not reimbursable, but residential debris and so forth is. Get the exact rules on that to help provide some clarification for, this is going to be a recurring question.
That's what we've been told, that's what we indicate just to make a good residential, yes, commercial, we've been told. And make sure too, if it's on a state highway, it's a different, it's a different category too, because you have different debris people that are picking them up on that 98.
Also, I'd like to add that ICC, I mentioned that part of that could be used for demolition, debris hauling and so forth. And also the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, if they were eligible for a project through that, debris removal is part of that equation, the, the cost of that debris removals in those grants.
And some people, they would say they were grandfathered in and where they're grandfathered in, say they're maybe two feet below where they should have been from years back. So if...
50% and the grandfathering's gone. If they get that 50% cost to repair, 50% over what the pre-storm market value of the structure is, that's the rate.
If they don't have a choice, they got to build up.
They got to build up or the insurance is going to be almost unaffordable, that actuarial rate. Two to three feet, three feet below the base flood elevation, $7,000 a year greater.
Okay. And one other thing, I guess, while I'm up here, is there any, is there any plans in effect, maybe handle stormwater on certain streets or maybe something to do with cleaning out, maintenance or cleaning out pipes and stuff in certain neighborhoods, like a stormwater, just a maintenance?
Like 7th Street?
Well, like Guardian.
Well, yeah, we're working on a master plan now, but if there's a certain area, we'll add it to the list. We're going to talk about that.
Yeah, because they, like, back behind my house, they kind of clean the pipes like, you know, one time it worked a lot better, but then, you know, everything comes and goes, comes around, goes in the pipes and just, you know, you've got a pipe, triple barrel pipe this big and in a month, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're all filled up, so everything backs up on the street, yards and everywhere else.
That was actually a county ditch back behind you there, between where we followed the road and got here, that's actually a county ditch.
But what about the pipes and the switches?
Uh, those in the front are city, but the actual main ditch, correct or wrong, Mr. Grabber? The main ditch in the back is a county.
It is a county ditch because the pipes are like city, right?
Yes, in the front.
Yeah, those are ones that are, those are ones that are filled up. They get, they get rough through there and around, it's, you know, like, yeah. But the biggest thing, I guess, is we probably get about 10 and so.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I have one more question.
Come on up.
I don't think Lynn will mind using hers as a scenario, but you've got so many people that, that are trying to figure out what to do about these houses, they don't have a place to live. And can you just carry me through, if she went to the building department and Mr. Kriel gave her a building permit to replace her home, whether she had an engineer that said it was okay, it wasn't 50%? When are you going to do your assessment? Do you work with the building department? I mean, you would hate to get started and get halfway through or get through with her remodel and then have you come and do an assessment, pre-storm and say, you know, you've lost your insurance, you know, your pre-firm policy's gone, now you're going to pay the $7,000, $8,000 or you might not be, be able to get insurance. How would that work with you and the city as far as pulling a permit to rehab a structure without elevating or doing anything else? That you deemed that it was less than 50% but what if FEMA come in and does their assessment and they say it's more than 50%?
The city is great, they favor doing the assessments and we would wait on their assessment.
Okay.
We're going to be doing those assessments as soon as possible. We've got some training pieces to put in place and the holidays killing us on this, of course, everybody needs a break and so forth. We want to do those inspections as early as possible, but the reality is...
Did you give us a date? Because earliest, when, in January?
Mid-January.
Okay.
Okay. We, um, everybody's been in response mode, I mean...
Yeah, where do we, how do we have a list for that?
I'm gonna be bringing my folks in, we're gonna do those inspections as quick as possible. We're, uh, got training already set up for the staff, and the folks who are working on these inspections. We're training local folks how to do them, too, so they'll know what to do with the data. We don't make the decision, we collect the data, they make the decisions based on the data. But our next training setup is January the 16th, and I would like to start immediately following that.
But we need an elevation certificate before that.
The elevation certificate helps you make your decision as far as how much you're gonna have to live, the existing home, or if you're gonna build a new home, what your requirement's gonna be, you know, get an idea of how high above the ground you're actually gonna be out there. And then to make the decision if you want to go above and beyond what all the requirements are, add another two foot and drive those insurance down, the rates down a lot lower, and let some of that be paid back on your elevation costs, the reconstruction cost. If anyone has any questions on flood insurance or anything that's personal information that may not be appropriate for this meeting, uh, I have several of my coworkers and insurance specialists here, would be glad to talk with y'all outside, you know, if you have any personal information. And if I could, could I have two minutes to talk about a guy named Bubba?
Sure.
Okay, tell y'all Bubba's story. Bubba's no country boy. He's like me, like a lot of us. He's a simple guy, he works hard, he's got his home, he's paid for it and everything. He don't like banks, he don't like the government. He gets hit by a storm. A tree goes over and knocks some of his shingles and messes his roof up, he got a foot of water inside the house. Come payday, Bubba's cashing that check, and he's headed to the big box store, he's gonna get his materials that weekend, he's driving nails, he's fixing his stuff, because Bubba works hard, takes care of business and everything. Problem is, that's why I really like these kind of meetings, Bubba's gonna do the best that he knows at the time. That's why these kind of meetings are good, to inform the community, and I strongly encourage y'all to follow your community's website, because if Bubba would have known there were flood-resistant materials out there that would be more resilient in the future to replace down there where that one foot of flooding was, if he would have known there were better roofing systems, or better connectors, or wind straps that could be added while he had the roof off and working on it, that would make him stronger in the long run, he would have probably done that. We do the best we know at the time. This is an educational process, it's a college-level course. You wanna keep your paperwork together, keep your appointments, keep things in order, inform yourself, and make the best decisions possible for your future and anyone else's future that's gonna live in those homes. Uh, thank y'all for your time, and I wish everybody the best of luck, and we'll be, do our best to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn this workshop. Motion, a second.
Second.
We adjourn. We'll be having a, a regular commission meeting, we're gonna take about a five-minute break, and then we'll get started on that. We call our meeting to order, I'll go ahead and call our city attorney and leaders and the municipal leaders, and then I'll take the first one. First, Frank, if you're here in Florida, we thank you once again for this beautiful day you've given us, and this, this city that we live in, God, we've been through a lot, but we know that you're, you're in charge, and we just ask that you lead and guide and direct us in everything that we do. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And now call this meeting, and put San Joe City Commission to order. You got consent agenda to approve? We got a due vote, we got a regular meeting on 12/4. That's all we got. Motion to approve. Have a motion, second?
Second.
You have a second? All in favor of the aye? Aye. Motion carries forward. Building Department update. Who's in with Building Department update? Come on in.
Over there, Billy Inspector. Okay, uh, to date, we've sold like 291 permits, 106 residential remodels, 48 residential reroutes, 47 electrical, 12 temples, 24 service changes, 10 commercial reroutes, seven commercial remodels, and of course, 20 demolitions. You're gonna see those numbers increase as people get their insurance money in. Uh, the, and of course, we, we got, we staff to take care of whatever comes in. Anybody got any questions, anything we need to tend to?
Any questions for Mr. Buck?
Buck, was there any way for you to tell us, permits have been pulled for demolition, is it, do you ask them if there's intent to pull a permit for reconstruction? I'd like to know how many people were losing for good, and how many people are demoing to rebuild.
Let me ask Kelly. Kelly, have you had that kind of conversation with any of them?
Not formally, most of them, uh, it's been a toss-up. Some of them are intending to rebuild, some of them are intending to sell.
Well, I think that's something, uh, we can, we can include on our, as a question.
Thank you.
Anything else on Mr. Buck? All right. Let's not pull it up. Continue what you're doing. All right. For San Joe redevelopment, have another case on that? Come on up, Bill.
Well, it shook up in my last meeting, I think I can give an update. We're moving forward a couple of projects. We, uh, have noticed all of the sign damage, especially downtown, uh, between MLK, David Langston, Reed Williams, and 98, and we're doing a bid package to replace all those signs that look the same, all the street signs I'm talking about. And, uh, we're also working on the third street main entrance sign right now, the one that was blown over. And also, I'm working with Commissioner Hoffman to look at, uh, maybe putting up a fish cleaning station out in the Frankly Park background. But other than that, we're just trying to get cleaned up like everyone else is right now, so. Any questions?
Anybody had any questions for Bill?
Ask about the sign project, I'll be around all week, combine, and look at it together. Okay?
Thank you, Bill. All right, City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. Prepared for the board's consideration is ordinance 551, uh, which relates to adoption of emergency ordinance for the City of Port St. Joe, Doctor, the preliminary federal emergency management agency base flood elevations for the issuance of construction building permits with additional minimum elevation requirements. And I'm not gonna read the whole heading at this point until the board, uh, makes a decision on which way to go. Ultimately, if the board would like to, uh, go forward and adopt this, it is set, uh, where it's an emergency ordinance. There's an allocation under Florida Statute 166.041, which is ordinance references allowing for an emergency adoption of this. What I would suggest, if the board wants to go forward with this, is that we adopt it under the emergency basis under Florida Statute, which again is, is referenced in the ordinance itself. Uh, then we come back and move later on, once the flood maps, flood plane maps are actually finalized, we would have a finalized, uh, ordinance that would go through the normal process of noticing, one reading, second reading, et cetera, et cetera. The reason that I would suggest if the board is inclined to go through with this, and only if the board's inclined to go through with this, that we adopt the emergency ordinance is to provide some consistency. Obviously, not, if the board chooses not to go forward and adopt this motion, that provides some consistency in itself. But if it's, I would suggest it's either a yes, we wish, the board wishes to go forward and adopt the two-foot, uh, above BFE, or no. And if that's the case, I would suggest if it's yes, then I would suggest adopting this emergency ordinance. Statute says for emergency ordinance adoption, there must be a two, it must be passed by two-thirds vote. And we can adopt the emergency ordinance today, we would come back and address, uh, at a later time, a finalized ordinance related to the same, or very substantially similar content. And if the board does not wish to adopt this, then, uh, that would cease this conversation. We'll take it from there.
And explain to me in detail a little bit what we adopted, exactly.
Well, I have, I have no time to read it, I just got it.
Two foot, well, we just had our meeting, uh, the workshop on two-foot above BFE, base flood elevation, uh, which we had Mr. Walker from FEMA here discussing. Not, FEMA does not, or no other regulatory agency require two-foot above BFE. Uh, but obviously, Mr. Walker, uh, believes that it's a good thing, that it, uh, should be adopted. Uh, there, again, I think Commissioner Hoffman asking for, Mr. Walker, for some cons and negatives of it, and he described those. Additionally, it would be a preliminary, adoption of preliminary flood plane maps is included in the ordinance, in this emergency ordinance language. At some point, uh, you know, FEMA flood maps will have to definitely take a strong look at. But if we're going to, if the board feels that it's necessary to go, uh, to two-foot above BFE, and I believe that, um, the mechanism would be by approving this emergency ordinance today, uh, and as the flood, FEMA flood maps are developed and finalized, then we would come back in a much longer and later ordinance, um, adopt that in the usual means and method and manner, including if the city would like to adopt the two-foot above BFE. Does that answer your question, Mayor?
Yes, and, uh, on this two-foot, is that what the county adopted?
Yes.
And it was, it was one time about doing a, a one-foot, and we go into a two-foot?
Currently, this regulation, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is one-foot above BFE.
All right, gentlemen, any discussion?
I, I wanna say that, you know, we, we, we're already at one foot. Why don't we let the, the people that's building, uh, their homes make the determination if they want to move up to two or not? It's like we're forcing them to, um, to move up to two feet, why can't we allow them to make that decision?
They can move up to two foot currently. The home builder can move up to three foot currently. We're, we're discussing a minimum, uh, requirement, but they've always had the option to elevate higher.
Okay, so if we adopt this, does that...
If you adopt this, you say instead of one foot, it's mandatory, we start at two foot. So right now, you could go, as Commissioner Hoffman pointed out, you could go two foot, three foot, et cetera. Well, if you adopt this emergency ordinance, then it becomes, well, you could go, you have to do two foot, but you could go higher than two foot.
And that's what I'm saying, we already got a base, um, requirement of one foot.
Yes.
So if, um, we adopt this, um, it starts at two, at two feet, right?
Correct.
So basically, we're taking, uh, that out of the, uh, people that's building their homes' hands to either make that decision if they want to stay, if they want to go one, two, or three, or making them go up to two, right, if we adopt this? That's my question, okay?
Correct. That would be the bare minimum, is two foot if this is adopted. It could be the minimum that you could build two, about, two-foot above BFE.
And this would affect, right now, uh, just rebuilds and housing a 50% damage?
It would affect new construction and those homes that were substantially damaged, is my understanding.
And it would also affect substantial improvements to your home if you go to build a permit, you'd have to come back up to code. So if we go above, if we set this at two, and someone's house is at one, and they go to build an addition on their home, am I right? That they will be required to elevate their home. So I, I personally feel like the pros to this are simply that the, the citizens may get a discount, may get a discount by NFIP by almost 5% off of their insurance. Uh, that's not a guarantee, we haven't talked to Steve Martin, NFIP coordinator, yet. Um, I would like to see us sit on this, I'd like to see us adopt the maps, but sit on this for a year, and let's put together a package that's all-inclusive of other things that we can do to make ourselves more storm-ready as well. Uh, I'd like us to take a look at, at all things with Bo's help, you know, what can we do to increase our standards, uh, that'll substantially help our insurance? Let's go for that score of four, uh, rather than just settle for a nine. I just think right now, we're jumping too quick. We do have flooding issues currently, and, you know, people can tell me all day, it's not gonna affect flooding, but if my neighbor raises his land up, the water's gotta go somewhere, and it's gonna go into my yard. I just think that we're jumping on this. It's an emergency ordinance, uh, I don't see the emergency on this particular issue. The flood, the flood maps are important, uh, but the, requiring an extra foot right now is gonna cause us more problems, make it more difficult to reconstruct as quickly as we possibly can, in my opinion.
Mr. Hoffman, you didn't even hear it?
Well, I think we went down the, the correct road in the last hour because we heard from experts. Uh, I mean, I'll admit, this is new to me, I'm not a builder, I don't do surveys, I don't do elevation certificates. Uh, I learned a lot in the last hour, uh, heard from people that are directly, um, affected by this decision. So the last thing that board needs to do is make a decision, and then six months from now, we look at it and think we put people in a negative situation. When we asked the FEMA person, what are the cons, um, he explained, well, if you have someone in that 49, 50% threshold, um, it would definitely affect that homeowner. And knowing that you still have the ability to build up higher, um, so, it, I don't know, I'm, I'm struggling with, am I helping a big group of people by a possible decrease in insurance? Or am I going to have a negative impact on a group of people that are struggling with a rebuild right now? That's the last thing I want to do, is put more burden on a family that's, you know, in the, either demolish or rebuilds. So I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Ashbrook on the idea of postponing the decision. I think we do need to adopt the maps that are coming out, because people need to know at what elevation do they start. We heard from one lady in the last hour who was faced with that, and she's about to order an elevation certificate, or she needs to compare that to the current and newest map, so.
We're not prohibiting people from going higher, that's the thing. They have the option to. And even Mr. Krill said, he advises people to go higher than the plus one.
Now, I would, uh, with the mayor's permission, ask that if we have people that are here for this meeting to speak as a homeowner or a construction person, uh, I'd like to hear from the public. I would also entertain having a follow-up workshop, maybe a few months down the road, because people will be that much more informed as to how it is personally affecting their decision on what to do in the future.
I don't have any problem with addressing the public to, whether you have a preference of, would we go one or two foot? If anybody would like to address that for a few minutes, I'd be glad to entertain anyone. Come on up, somebody. Come on. I see your hands over there. Never hands, never one? I knew if I asked all of them, if I'd get somebody.
Sorry, got me, Steve Womack, 302 19th Street. Uh, my question isn't about the one-foot, two-foot. My assumption is that this ordinance would apply to public property, meaning city buildings also, or is this just private, uh, buildings? And the reason that I ask that is because if we're talking about insurance costs, and that the city, that the taxpayers are paying the insurance bills for the city, is there any thought about as the city needs to build or rebuild, that they're gonna fall under the same requirements in order to save the taxpayers' insurance money through the city? I hope that wasn't too complicated, but the base question is, does the city have the responsibility to build at the same requirements as private citizens?
Jim?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, we all follow the same guy. The answers, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. And then, you know, I say that specifically because, as Mr. Ashbrook was saying, that if private citizens build up on the left or the right of us, uh, it could influence our properties, just as the city would. And in the ordinance, section three, sub-paragraph four, it says to, uh, consider waterways and other floodplains as you're building in order to minimize the flood, uh, damage in an area. And without picking at scabs, that would be the 10th Street Park. If you build buildings in a ditch, the insurance costs are gonna be higher. And I had stood up here once before, several months ago, expressing my concern about flooding, and, uh, no one would answer my question as to how that project would improve flood control. And I think the people that are standing here, sitting here, know exactly what I'm talking about. The board and the representatives specifically ignored my question. So now would be a great time, since we're talking about flooding, for somebody to address the 10th Street flooding issue. Or is that still off, on or off the table?
Mayor, I'm gonna advise the board not to answer any questions related to 10th Street Ballpark.
Okay. All right. Anyone else in the public? Come on up.
Recognizing that the county adopted the two-foot, you know, as their restriction, what you gentlemen need to understand is it isn't just residential, it's also, you know, uh, commercial buildings, et cetera. And the, if you adopt a two-foot, what does that mean for our buildings downtown? What does that mean for people that are trying to rebuild their businesses? Um, because if you make them go up, what does that mean for other situations as it pertains to getting people that have disabilities into your building? I mean, there, if we're trying to attract businesses and get people in, you're putting maybe, uh, an extra hardship on us, folks. And so the hotels, et cetera, you have to think about what that means. I, I go back to what y'all have kinda talked to about, you know, give the, the minimum, what we have, and allow people to make their decisions based off of what has recently transpired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any way out? Come on, Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to mention to you that if you're going to do the flood maps, and if you're going, go ahead and at least do one foot so that we have something we can use our permit on, we can go ahead and get people moving.
Bo, I was under the impression we had one foot currently.
We do have one foot currently, but I think you're changing part of that ordinance. Am I right?
There's nothing, unless the board actually makes an affirmative vote, nothing's changed.
Yeah, if you do an affirmative vote, then you will be changing that. So if you can include the one foot elevation, then that certainly gets us where we can move forward.
Yeah, and if we choose to not take this up at all, we will stay at what we want.
Stay where it is.
Then I guess that's, I did a poor job of expressing that.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you. All right. Any more discussion from commissioners on this issue?
I just have one question. Was the adoption of the flood maps part of that emergency ordinance?
And Mr. Anderson, I just spoke about this. If it sounds like the board wishes to take no action on the two-foot BFE issue, I would make a recommendation, I believe Mr. Anderson was in agreement with this, that we adopt the preliminary FEMA maps at our next meeting, if that's what the board so desires, and not included in this. Part of the reason is, although we were acting under emergency ordinance, there are shown notice requirements and that has to be out and we would be scaling this down based off the commentary from the board and we wouldn't have enough time for that. What would be the end result, basically, an adoption of preliminary maps would be disseminated before the vote. So I'd ask that this issue be addressed at the January meeting of the board. My next meeting is in January, anyway.
I have a question for Mr. Creel then. When you're issuing permits at this point, are you issuing them based on the new flood maps or off what we currently have?
All right now.
We're doing the citizens a huge disservice by not adopting these flood maps as quickly as possible.
We can, you know, under directions of the board, we can base it on the flood map. FEMA recommends that you do so. They say the latest news available, that's actually what the rules are. We can use those if it's challenged. I don't know where you'd stand on that.
That in effect, I believe it would be fair to say, in a large area of the city, the new flood maps are going to have an impact on the elevation of the new builds anyway.
Absolutely, and they're coming. The new flood maps are coming in May, they're going to be adopted by the federal government.
Right. You have to realize, and I support adopting the flood maps. Actually, I thought I brought that up last meeting when we did it. But we need the best information and the flood maps are the newest and best information. So if you go with that, you're already, I think, going to elevate the rebuilds and the new builds to some extent.
And in regards to flooding your neighbor, depending on type of construction, you can believe in the placement of field in a flood area because all that does is increase your, maybe not your depth, but your width, unless you have a mode of your flood area. So anyway, like I said, we can go ahead and enforce those and we always strongly recommend to people that they use those in the future.
What would council think if we advised our building department to go ahead and start using the new flood maps with our intent is to pass those flood maps?
The newest and best, most updated information should be used at all times by the building department. It was indicated by Mr. Walker here from FEMA. The board has expressed his desire to adopt the flood maps. So I think Mr. Creel could be well advised to take that into consideration between now and January when issuing permits.
So if Mr. Creel is at 12:25 today, can we start using the new flood maps?
Yes, sir.
Then I'm happy with whenever we can pass it.
Do it. All right. If somebody would make a motion of the board's intent to adopt the preliminary flood maps, similar to a resolution?
And I was under the intent, we're pressured that we did that last meeting, but I will make a motion that this board intends to adopt the new preliminary flood maps.
Based off the emergency conditions that exist today.
That sounds good.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to continue is four zero.
Mayor, I have nothing further.
That's it? All right, Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The first thing, Hurricane Michael update. Staffs continuing to work with debris management, getting cleaned up, looking much better. One area that we do have concerns is in the commercial district, understanding commercial debris will need to be hauled off. We've asked, we tried to get contractors to pick those up that are under contract for debris management, but at this point in time, they do need to be taken care of by the commercial folks downtown. Residential continuing on, as we talked earlier, there's been no deadline set. There will be a deadline set at some point. We'll try to get that information out to the general public as quick as we can. That way, we can have plenty of time to make sure we get everything picked up. But once that deadline is met, then we'll have to hold tight to that deadline.
And Jim, we'll make sure all this information is on our website. Can you just visit the website?
Absolutely. As soon as we come up with some deadlines on this stuff, we definitely will. We'll also add on there, too, about the conversation we had with Darryl earlier today from FEMA. He gave us some good website information. We'll download those and put those under, something here for FEMA as well. I think the first person we had is from FEMA. Brenda's here. I think it's going to be our last meeting, I think.
It is. This is my last meeting and I wanted to introduce Jeremy Bott, who will be our replacement as registration has closed December 17th, so our footprint starts getting smaller. Jeremy's got a large area. Do you want to come up and tell?
I've been here Hurricane Michael over with Al Caffey since day three. I'm ex-convict, I now have Panama City, Panama City Beach, and Lainheva. I'm going to be taking over the Gulf County as well as for St. Joe and Weebaw. I come from headquarters in DC. So I'm here, I've got lots of answers for you. I know you have great connections with Darryl. We also have our PMG. We have all the FEMA programs, you have points of contact. If you don't have answers, come to me and we'll get them taken care of for you, especially in now we're going into longer-term recovery. That's the next phase. You're going to have questions, that's what I'm here for. Okay?
Could we all get one of your cards?
I will send that. I'll send that information to you with all this detailed information. Also, and I was going to see if Martha, Martha Lothrige is our long-term recovery committee person. I thought she was going to be here today, but I don't see her. And I will give her your information, too. The long-range recovery committee has been established. Jim Knight steering it, Jim McKnight steering it. We have a steering committee put in place. There'll be several committees and we'll get information from the website as well on how people can help join that committee so that they can help in the long-term recovery. As we say, you're going to do more, this is a long process. So as my last meeting, I just want to say, I've been through a lot of disasters during my time at FEMA and I am so impressed with your communities I've had. It's been a pleasure to work with everyone, even when they yell at me, they're polite, which is better than I can say about some other disasters. But we do try our best to help all the survivors in the cities as we go forward. We realize that what we do is slow. We have a lot of regulations that we have to go by. Most of those regulations are set up by past experience and knowing what has happened in past experience, what we've done right and wrong. But I just appreciate all of you. Jim and Charlotte have been just delightful to work with, as well as you on the board and please accept my appreciation of all of your community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Brenda. Before you leave, Brenda, if I yelled at you, I apologize at this point.
You're the only one that I was just going to bring up, but I held my tongue.
Before you leave, I do want...
But you want to make sure your in-laws are out of your house? Is that...
I'll discuss that. At our last meeting, we asked if you would define what a floodplain was. We were talking about people having the temporary trailers and we were told that FEMA would not place it in a floodplain, even though we just had a hurricane flood. So you were going to get the definition of floodplain?
So the definition has not been decided. They are making exceptions. We are putting trailers in some floodplains.
Okay.
Darryl, actually, we asked Darryl to get that, too, and he has not been able to get what the definition of who gets it in a floodplain and who doesn't. As soon as I get that information or as soon as Jeremy has it, we'll get that to you. But we do move forward and they are making exceptions on that.
As long as they're making exceptions, I don't even need an answer to the question. I just want to hear that they're putting them, where do people need them?
They are, and they're, we've got several in the city already in floodplain areas.
Thank you. I did thank you for all the work you've done.
Sure. Thank you.
Nice to hear that.
Any other questions?
Next, Mayor, we have Representative from SBA to give us an update.
Good afternoon again, honorable commissioners. I am Thamien Jodri, Small Business Administration. I've spoken to all of you before and this is basically just an update on how we're wrapping up operations. As most of you already know, the physical deadline application was yesterday. So at this point, if anyone still wants to fill in a loan for a physical disaster, he or she would have to submit a letter saying that, why did you miss the deadline? Is there an extenuating circumstance where it was beyond your control and you couldn't do so? That is the bulk of our operations, but we still have that economic entry loan and that's, the deadline for that is July 11th. So if you know of any businesses, nonprofits, that have had lower revenues, just low sales, low donations due to Hurricane Michael, please do encourage them to look into this. Interest rates are very much the same, 3.675% at a minimum for businesses, 2.5% minimum for nonprofits. No caps, excuse, the cap is $2 million, but no minimum. So no loan application fees. Our operations are still here, as in Gulf Coast State College will reopen our DRC there on Thursday. Hours are Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Sundays, noon to 5:00. We also have that center at Weebaw Hitzka, same hours. And just to give you an update, gentlemen, Gulf County, nearly 700 loan approvals we've had from SBA worth $41.7 million. This includes 639 homes for $35 million, 52 businesses for $6 million. And lastly, the economic injury loans, eight economic injury loans have been approved for $608,000. So that covers my overview. I thank all of you for your time and I hope I was able to help you in any way I could. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I have a question. When you say that number was approved?
Yes, sir.
Does that mean that was actually funds dispersed or just approval process?
It's approved, Commissioner, so if it's dispersed, like a construction loan, in process, say, I'll take yours as an exception.
Could you have been approved and then not taken up the opportunity of the program? You filled out an application and you were approved?
Yes, sir.
But then, when you got into the details of the program, you decided to not receive the funding, you did not take the loan. So the numbers that you gave, is that based on approved applications or actual people that were given the loan?
Approved applications. And at that point, if you say, no, I don't want it, then sure, the numbers will be different, say tomorrow, say if you started, say that, no, I don't want it.
Right. My other question is, is it correct that if a homeowner applied for the SBA and chose, I understand that you correct me if these facts are not correct. It's my understanding that $25,000 is kind of upfront. You can take that money and there's no receipts required. It's much easier to get to $25,000. But if you decided you wanted the full $50,000, the additional $25,000, the SBA through FEMA is actually going to put a lien on your property. They're going to mandate that their name be placed on the deed of the property. Is that correct?
Basically, you're talking about the secured versus unsecured. You are right. As in, like, if it's a secured loan, then SBA will ask for basically a security, not collateral. That could be your mortgage.
Right.
But if it's under 25, then unsecured loan.
That's what I was saying.
Yes, sir.
25 is easy to get.
Yes, sir.
I have a family member, actually, that had went through the process and was very surprised that they were requiring to be placed on the mortgage as an interest of a mortgage, which property is clear and free. So they quickly decided they'd take the 25, that they were not in any way interested in having a group of any sort be placed on their property. In my mind, the simple way to look at it is it's a lien. It's really not a lien, but that's what I'm calling it.
Precisely, that's what we call it.
So if you're going to have that, so you're only getting an additional $25,000, but yet you've now allowed someone to put a lien on your property that may be worth $300,000. So they decided against that. Just thought I would share that with you.
Of course.
It didn't seem like a good deal after all.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor. Any other questions about Hurricane Michael? We're out. Moving on, the next item is RFP 2018-16. This is for our group repairs. If you'll turn over the page, it's nine, Group 10. We have went out for a competitive bid for the repairs and we have gave a ranking system on this. Based on this, staff recommendation is to go with land roofing for the Centennial Building in the amount of $98,000, of land roofing for the Washington Gym in the amount of $58,800, and also with land for the Stackhouse in the amount of $44,800.
Where are they at?
Jacksonville.
Did anyone local bid on these jobs at all?
Monolith is now currently located. They do have an office here in Port St. Joe, so they are considered local at this point.
Which one was that?
The last one, Monolith.
Likely just came and set up an office.
They've been in town a couple of months.
Okay, I don't consider that local. Any reason why Monolith is so much higher? They get a different bid package than everyone else?
That would be a question for them. I think they got somebody here at the moment.
Wow.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Kerrigan, is President of Monolith Construction. Sorry, this thing sounds like a little muffled here. So I based on these bids, when I went to go look at them, our base was to do the entire job from start to finish. In my best opinion, the prices that was given there is way below my cost completely and I don't feel that we bid on the same thing. So I might have bid something wrong.
Did you get the same packet that the other people got?
Correct, that is, I guess. And that's basically what I felt that I would need to do those jobs in Maggiot, that those are pretty tremendous jobs, the prices that came in there seemed a little low.
And if you were sitting up here, which one would you lean towards?
I would say...
If we called this land moving guy, then he's going to say, well, I gave you a price that I'll do it for that.
Absolutely, no. And it's, you know, it's still a learning process for me, too. Like I said, we're still new and we're trying to figure out the right way to do everything and I would have loved an opportunity to work with the city and I'm sure there will be plenty more in the future.
Right. Welcome to our community.
Yes, I appreciate that.
In the future, we can get your prices more...
Hopefully, yeah. Hopefully, I can, we'll find where we are in the right place there. We also submitted a bid for the police station, but see how those things go as well. But we look forward to working together in the future.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I'm Bobby Pocore. I'm also a license holder and Chris here is the president, my partner. Also want to introduce ourselves to the community.
Well, thanks for being here.
We moved in, we came in a few days after the storm, volunteered, realized all the work that needed to be done and decided to set up a shop.
Where's your shop at now?
On First Street, next to Mr. Myers' old schoolhouse, on the corner of First and Woodward. And I'm living currently on Third and Woodward, right behind.
Okay.
In the cottage.
Glad to have you here.
Yes, thank you. Glad to be here.
And in regards to the prices that we do jobs to, when we do these, you know, the prices and the numbers for this, we look at all safety requirements that are required, the lifts, the fencing off, you know, the harnesses. Shops are very large, they're commercial projects. A lot of the work we do is, our office is based in... To do this start to finish, that's what we came up with. Frankly, our cost would have been higher than what was presented to you from the other businesses, but, um, in addition, we've bid them separately. Had they all, had you won all three, the cost would have been reduced because we wouldn't have needed to triple certain of the, uh, sort of equipment through your outside. So, but we look forward to bidding in the future.
We will look forward to giving you some work in the future.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you have seen as this is one RFP, we can vote one time for all three properties?
Yes, I would just indicate that it's gonna be who the extra contractor is for and the amount for each project.
Motion to award RFP 2018-16 to Land Roofing Company for all three facilities. Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Would anybody say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries four.
Moving along, the next item is the CDBG grant. This, we had had an update a few months back from Mr. Bruce Howard that we fell way down on the ranking. Had a conversation with Mr. Pat Howard in Tallahassee and we have moved up on the rankings. So we feel that there's a good chance that we're still in the, in the hunt to be awarded the funding for rehab on Sewer on Avenue C and D. I believe it's 100, is that correct?
Uh, I was there with them.
C and D, so, uh, the $650,000 grant is still on the table for us. So we'll keep you informed if we get a, a warrant later, but it does look really good for us.
So we went from when, what's the guy's name that came and told?
Bruce Bowles.
Bruce. Yeah, he pretty much told us, "Forget about it."
We did, we went way down on the rankings, but a lot of times if there's extra money or that comes into the state, they'll move on down. Instead of just giving the award to 20 people, they might have moved on down a few. So it sounded good the other day, so it sounded like we might still get some money.
Jim, what about these CDBG R grants?
Yes.
Storm related, disaster related, are we applying for any of that?
We will eventually, definitely. I think it's a good thing for us to do. Uh, those things are gonna come six, eight months down the road. To my understanding on there, did have a conversation with Department of Economic Opportunity that it's basically gonna set up a whole nother safety and staff and there's a lot of different rules and regulations on those. But beginning your thoughts together, I believe there will be some opportunities for the city to put in some grants.
Good deal.
Any questions on that? Okay. Uh, the next item, the North Port St. Joe Project Area Coalition Zoning Change. Did get a letter from Mr. Ray Greer, it's in there for your review. The plan is to get this out, uh, in the mail to the affected property owners this week. And then from there, uh, Mr. Ray Greer will be setting up a time to come and present it to your planning board and to the board as a whole for consideration of adoption. So we're moving along with the process. This will be the second letter going out to the general board. Uh, moving on to new business, we'll continue to work through our parks. The, uh, the next two items are reference to trying to evaluate how we put them back together. The first being the Buck Griffin Lake Timber Bridge Repair. Uh, the one bridge is completely washed out, uh, unacceptable for, uh, citizens to use the park to get from the 16th Street, Deuter Parker Park over to Ford Park. This would, uh, turn Mr. Smallwood loose to evaluate this impetus because the nature is one of, what we need to do to put it back together and to go out and bid for it.
What's the funding source on this, Jim?
Right now, we're working off of our insurance at this point in time. It's the only money that's coming to the city. We got roughly $500,000 that came in. This will bid us out to bid to see exactly what the cost is for it. We don't know this cost yet. We're also like with the one we just awarded before, we're continuing to work with our insurance company. We're gonna take those numbers back from our reward of the bid and work with the insurance company to see if they're going to meet those needs or bring it back to the board when we may have to take it back.
It may not hurt. NERDA has a pot strictly for rebuilding parks and increasing tourists through parks, tourism through parks. That may be something we can look at too, if it, if it's a large expense.
The staff recommendation being to go ahead and award this task order so we can have our engineer tell us exactly, have it stubbed already as to what needs to be done. Uh, and we can go ahead and beat it out to go ahead and determine the cost.
So if there's two actually?
Yes, if the next one is actually Frank Peyton Park, the picnic facility in gazebo, some people refer to as the city pier, iconic, who I probably weren't asked about the repairs on it than anything else. Uh, but this would also give us the opportunity for Mr. Smallwood to engineer it, tell us what needs to be done to actually put it back in place.
So that's the picnic area.
And then actually? Yes, sir. That would be the picnic area, the large gazebo by the picnic area that got destroyed and also the gazebo slash city pier out on the, over the water.
But as far as the, the, uh, Buck Griffin area, that's only for that one crossover bridge?
No, sir, there would be, there's actually three that's involved.
Oh, it's all three?
This would actually be the big one that actually crosses over to, uh, the inlet going into the bay and also the one, we're looking at the 20th Street side. There's probably a better way to restructure that instead of being over the water, probably a, maybe a more economical and also a, um, one that'll last longer. And then you also have another little connecting piece that crosses over Buck Griffin Lake in between, that would also be addressed.
Okay, that's covered under all of this?
All three of these will be evaluated by Mr. Smallwood, correct if I'm wrong. He would help us compare bid package and then we'll see what we're gonna do.
Okay. You need a motion to do that?
Yes, sir.
So move.
We have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries four.
One question, was that for, was that for one task order or for both?
That's for the blood flow.
Yeah, I thought it was for both of them.
Yeah.
We were talking about blood flow and stuff.
Okay, perfect. We'll get busy on it. Things are moving, I, I know it seems like it's moving slow, but things are really moving fast, uh, as far as putting things back together. I've been very impressed with our staff trying to get these things addressed. You look at our parks from where we came, we're just a little over two months in. We made a lot of progress, we've still got some work to be done. Uh, the next item, New Year's Eve fireworks. These have already been ordered, the TDC actually reimburses for this. The fireworks is to be scheduled the same as last year, to be launched from the boat ramp at 10 o'clock T M on the. And the last item I have, mayor, is Duke Energy Grant. We were contacted by Duke Energy to apply for a grant. Looks really good that we are in the running for a $15,000 grant from Duke Energy. So, application's been filled out, submitted, we're just waiting to see if we get approval.
And what can that be used for?
Uh, pretty much for, uh, rehab after the storm. As long as it's related to the storm, um, I think is, I think we've got several opportunities on the lighting side that may be appropriate to use those. For the kids, we're trying to get back to the ball fields. I think Mr. Grant has got a, a plan we can bring back to you the next meeting, show you what we're talking about. But I think he's got some ideas as to, would be appropriate to use that money for.
And while we're talking about Duke Energy, when are they gonna get a light fixed that's out? The subtle lights around town, see if you might have to go by and identify them again. But I know they knew when they put up on the corner of 10th and Woodward, didn't have a burn since the, uh, form, I don't believe, that's, got it fixed last night. I mean, we need to, we pay them for every light.
We reported them all, it's three weeks ago when we did them.
Okay.
I don't know how far behind they are, but.
Yeah, I know they're busy.
Uh, Mr. Grant?
Yes, sir, thank you, mayor. Uh, just as an update for the board, uh, our bids closed end of last week for emergency lift station repairs. We received those bids and reviewed those yesterday, Mr. Anderson and myself with our engineering group. And, uh, our recommendation was to go back out for bids on that. The manners changed a little bit, uh, from, from the first one, so that's kind of where we're at. Uh, we're gonna send that back out for another 15-day bid and bring those numbers back to the board after that point.
Okay.
So unless there's any questions from the board, that's all I have, mayor.
Any questions for John?
We need a motion to extend the bid process.
Probably a project to rebid.
To do a rebid?
Yes, sir.
A rebid. Motion to rebid RFP 2018-18.
All right, we got a motion on the floor, we have a second.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner.
Oh.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries four. John, is all you got?
That's all, sir.
Do you have, uh, any information on what we discussed for the 7th Street, uh, flood issue?
No information at this point. What I can tell you regarding that is, uh, last Friday, Mr. Smallwood emailed me the plans. Those plans are in the vendor's hands for pricing. I hope to get that back today, tomorrow, uh, possibly Thursday, Commissioner. Uh, the moment I do that, I'll have some numbers for you and I'll make sure I give you a call.
Okay. And if the other members are not familiar, we have a, a serious issue at the alleyway behind, um, 7th Street. It's affecting the homes and the backyards of the homes on both roads, uh, not only 7th Street. What's that other road?
Six.
Woodward.
Sixth Street.
Woodward Sixth, right.
Yeah, and, uh, it, I mean, it's hard to describe how bad it has gotten. Part of it is the city's issue with, uh, the pipes are just in disarray. They need to be repaired and replaced. So, uh, John has come up with an idea of, uh, ordering new pipe, sloping it the way it needs to be sloped and actually having the city do the work. We had, uh, uh, bid at one point, it was close to $100,000 and that was it. We paid to have a different group do it, so we're looking now at buying the pipe ourselves and getting over there and fixing that. So I appreciate you for your, what you've done already. When that information comes in, I want that on, on the top of the list on things to get done, so.
I agree. It's, it's terrible over there.
We're, uh, you know, we're basically following the engineer plans that, that Dewberry, you know, did for us a, a year or so ago.
Right.
So that's, that's what we're doing.
We need it as a phone company for one thing. I went by there and looked at it yesterday and you know that ditch, the exposed ditch there at Woodward, the phone, uh, jack is laying in the ditch. So can we get someone to call the, the phone company and have them look at that and?
When, when we get prepared to do the project, we'll request all that be moved.
Okay, yeah, something needs to be did, because you can't really even dig.
Right.
Uh, without fear of turning off, we'll tell them how many house phones, but they need to get, get over there and look at that so we can at least now dig around it.
Right.
So, appreciate it.
All right. Larry?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything for today unless the board has questions.
Anyone have any questions for Larry?
Yeah. All right, you run along. I'm out of water, I'm a wastewater man. Kevin, what you got?
Uh, we went back and talked about the water in the state DP to see if there's any way we could shore up some funding and, um, things are looking a little better. We didn't ask for 100% of some of these things we asked for half, like our Lagoon project, because we're still paying for, you know, the hurricane effects now. And even as of today, we're still fighting that. So, um, it's hopeful, I guess, that we get something back from that, but I don't know how much that's gonna be. We asked for half and, um, anything's better than nothing, so that's a, that's positive. Uh, we're, we're still getting a lot of water in and it's slow to get it out. So we're, we'll be running right on through, I don't know, for a couple of months, I guess. So there will be no days off for my group, you know, not Christmas Day, not, I mean, we just don't have it where we can work it out. That's kind of the working schedule that we've got right now. So, but we'll push the water out as best we can.
And when do you say this biological dries in will begin?
Uh, February, we have to put something in the pond, middle part of February. So the, we talked to the vendor, one we've awarded the, the bid to. Uh, they're ready, they're, they'll be ready and on site, just waiting for us to tell them when to drop the first load in. So, and we'll wait till February, that way we're not paying January's expense.
Sure.
So we'll start, we'll start in February with expense, which should save us a little bit, I guess, of this year.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Kevin?
Does the city have, uh, holiday pay scale?
Yes, I mean, you, you'll get the, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Kevin. Michael Flure?
Uh, we've put out our November financial statements last week. Uh, the, the city's current cash position is holding steady. Uh, we will see some pressure in the next two months on, on our cash position as a lot of our customers have worked out their situations and we've been issuing a lot of adjustments to customer accounts. So we will see some pressure on our cash flow over the next few weeks, but we're holding steady.
Do you see a need for the city of St. Joe to entertain the idea of seeking a loan? I saw this this morning where, um, yeah, either Pennell City, but, uh, yeah, they just asked for a $50 million loan and went into, do you see that or do you, do you think we are?
Not at this time, but, but, but as we start working through some of these bids and get a better handle on what our repair costs are, we will be better positioned to assess whether or not we'll need some help, uh, with, with immediate cash needs or not.
Well, and there's no one other than yourself that would, in my opinion, we see the things after you've already calculated.
Sure.
So I'm just gonna ask that you stay on top of that and if you, uh, I want you to feel like you can call us or call me or Jim or whoever and, and say, "Hey, we need to, we need to do something before it gets out of hand."
Absolutely, and Jim and I, and I look at our cash position daily and we discuss any fluctuations that happen. So we do discuss it daily and we'll certainly bring any concerns to you as soon as they develop. Yes, sir.
Mr., I have a question though. We've been blessed so far with the debris management. As long as that stays under the state, that's probably the biggest mover that you'll see. And to my understanding, I think it falls on the backs of a lot of the cities and the county, in Bay County, so we've been blessed there.
That would be one thing I would have pointed out, just from my personal experience. In Bay County, Bay County issued a $50 million bond, the city, Pennell City, they took out a loan on a little different route, but the main driver of that, um, is the debris pickup. Here in Gulf County, FDOT is responsible for those payments. Uh, so now that we won't have to, I, you know, we cannot be in lights, um, Bullfield, but the main driver of the loans taken out in Bay County, Pennell City and potentially other municipalities will be paying those debris pickup bills.
Well, I, I know we have, um, discussed funding through Triumph and other areas. I, I just want to point out that you're the one crunching on the numbers, you're the experts, so.
Yes, sir. We'll keep an eye on it, yes, sir. Absolutely.
And I have one question, Sir Mike. Um, we mentioned, well, you brought up the, the loan program. Have you looked into the community disaster loan yet? Is that available? Has the state turned that on and made it available this time?
Uh, no, sir, I'm not, I'm not looking at that issue.
Okay. Once session starts, if they turn that on, that's specifically used for operating funds to help us avoid from going too far into our, our coffers, our rainy day funds. Uh, but there's other grants out there as well. There's an Department of Labor grant that will pay an employee that was terminated due to the storm. You can hire them on as, in a position in the city, uh, for up to one year and those can traditionally get extended as well. But one of the things, uh, the mayor and I had the pleasure of doing was talking to some, some other mayors and commissioners from Hurricane Harvey and from some of the affected mayors and commissioners from South Carolina. Um, and their best piece of advice was that you need to staff up. You're gonna need an in-house city planner, you're gonna need a grant writer and you're gonna need a storm recovery coordinator. commissioners from South Carolina. And their best piece of advice was that you need to staff up. You're going to need an in-house city planner. You're going to need a grant writer. And you're going to need a storm recovery coordinator. And they highly advise that those are the funds that you go after to try to staff those positions for the next three to five years. You guys are taking on an additional job, every one of you. There's the regular city side, and then there's the storm recovery side of things. And I don't want to pay you double. So, if we could hire some more people, I want us to try to go after those grants and see what we can do about staffing up.
All right. Well, let's get together and let's discuss those options.
They discussed lots of ways, you know, to get money from different organizations and all. And we get something to you.
Okay, yeah.
David will.
That sounds good.
Lots of notes.
Yeah, I can fill in on you, David.
Got lots of notes.
All right.
Yes, sir. Links to drive sidewalks of the county at their next meeting should select their, their CEI firm. And so, that's kind of the last trigger to get that project moving forward. That's what they've been waiting on. They advertise it, re-advertise it, have to get DOT to approve it, yada, yada.
Just please tell them we want them. It's been six years in the making. And we'd like to get those sidewalks.
And they received the bids in August. So, it's been six months from there. The trail lighting, that's part of the RTP grant, which is the county applied for and obtained and involves obviously a lot of the city because that work is involved in the city. And so, we met with the staff, your staff, county staff. And part of that grant was in Core Park and making improvements in Core Park. Conditions have changed since the storm down there. And so, the county was going to go back and try to see if they can revise some of the scope that's in that grant to more what the needs are for you today versus what they were pre-storm. And so, we're waiting on some direction on that. Hopefully, we'll get something positive on that. The trail lighting is wrapped into that grant. So, as that scope, if that scope changes, then trail lighting, you know, will change with it somewhat. But, focus on the trail lighting is still from 20th to the elementary school, unless y'all direct. Otherwise, that's all of our discussions have been on that part of it. And then the road paving, I hope to have some hard dates for you, but later this week, but sometime at first year, they're going to start on Eighth Street. They still owe you Williams Avenue. And then the intersection at First and Reed does for the three that y'all approved. They just haven't done yet. And I hope to get some hard digs to provide to you. But, it's going to be after the first year for it to actually start. Those are the things from me. Any other questions?
All right. Any questions?
Is that DOT working out on 98 yesterday? Are they redoing? It's DOT. Okay.
Anything else? Thanks for talking. Code enforcement? Everybody looking at the report Richie's giving us? Got a lot to look at. He's busy.
Mayor, one thing that Mr. Burkin did want to note that, did get about six pages of permits that have been pulled. He is right now looking at those for, make sure that people that are doing work, make sure they pull the permits. License contractors need to make sure they have license if they need license. And Board Committee Bill is part of it. Because he is reviewing those. They're going to do a few stock work orders this past week.
I will mention one thing, Mayor, that when I was speaking to the gentleman that was giving us the FEMA update earlier, yes, or a couple of days ago, he mentioned that if we needed assistance with code enforcement, that FEMA will provide the money for an additional code enforcer for the storm recovery efforts. So, it is something to think about.
Sure. Please, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have on the agenda tonight is the bid process to rebuild the police department. Can you talk about that?
Yes, sir, I can. If everybody will turn over to pages 20 and 21. This is the bids that were received in reference to the police department repairs. Based on the information we have, we did rank these as well. Based on the ranking system, the recommendation from staff is to go with WG Pitts Group. If you look at your, one sheet that I handed to you, it's actually a breakdown. If you look at everything that's included there, this does not include flooring and AC. It would be for $66,755. That would be from WG Pitts Group. This would be for the electrical, would be for, included lighting package, would include sheetrocking. But, it would not include your flooring. It would not include your AC. Those two items, we believe we can do below our bid threshold. Chief will give quotes for those to make sure we follow our policy, the current policy on that. The recommendation is to go with WG Pitts Group for $66,755.
I've got a question for the board. How much do we want to put into redoing City Hall? Are we happy with the location and the condition of the building as it is? Or are we just throwing good money at bad building? No opinion. All right.
Mr. Ashbrook, I think that is.
It's good, it's young.
No, go ahead with you. I'll talk to you.
I think that right now, we have no trust to try to get back to the City Hall. And we can see how we want, with the money that we can, just right now. Eventually, you know, it's an old building. Eventually, we're going to have to do something. So, I know we need to go ahead and get this police station, where they can go back into the police station. But, as far as anything else, I don't know. I think eventually, we're going to have to move into a new building. We're going to have to do something.
Where are you at now, chief?
Courthouse. Upstairs at the courthouse.
Do you want my bid?
Yes, we do. I mean, I'm just going to be honest with you. You're going to spend $66,000. You've still got to pay for flooring, AC, new paint, furniture. I mean, I can't tell you what that's going to cost. But, that's to get us back in. I'm just throwing that out there.
What did insurance give us for that?
I didn't bring a number, but $46K comes to mind. But, I don't have it in front of me. That's just going on the other hole cover.
I think it is that you're going to have the city DRS that are coming up. I think you've got to look long-term, like Commissioner likes to say. I think right now, we're putting a Band-Aid on it. That way, you've got a police force, you've got a City Hall, you're able to do day-to-day operations. But, I do think we need to go back and look. If you look at the plan that's being worked on, it's going to come before you next month. That is in reference to rezoning of Martin Luther King. It indicated on there for a complex for City Hall on there. That's been drawn on there. And that was done years ago in there. That's an ideal location. So, we're longing there because your runtime's for your police, your fire. I think you need to look long-term. Maybe an opportunity to be able to have a nice fire department, a nice police department, a City Hall with a conference room, ADA compliant. All those things drive through the whole nine yards on there. Are we at that point right now? No, we're not. But, I do believe, long-term, you need to be looking at that and figuring out, okay, let's do the minimum we need to do for operations. Just think, long-term, let's apply for one of these type of grants on there to be able to have the complete complex that can meet all the county, all the city's needs.
And I'm just, we have a spot for them right now at the, with the county. Are we, is there still a chance that through a PA process, that we could get the money, more than $40,000 if we pushed it?
At this point, what we're going to do is go back to the insurance company, say, hey, look, our commission awarded this amount of money based on the ranking system. Our highest ranking was this vendor. This is what they're doing. Will you max this money? How much will you give us towards this? And then we're going to bring it back to you. And then we're going to have to make some decisions as to where we go from there.
Would you accept a motion pending insurance paying for it?
I don't think you're going to get four. And it's going to take a little bit more at a time. I think you've got to make a decision if, if you want your police department back downtown, we've got to figure out the money to be able to have it in the shop right now. That's chief.
Are y'all, you guys comfortable with where you are?
We are. And I don't want to step on any toes or offend anybody, but you have a fully functioning police department. Where it's at now. I mean, we're out there doing our job as we were six months ago. Location doesn't matter to me. I mean, I understand the public's got to go to courthouse instead of down there. But, I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
So, the secretary, you have a secretary. She's out at the courthouse doing what she is doing.
Our normal job.
What is the downside of being at courthouse now?
We're not as accessible, probably.
And how many contacts within a day or a week would you normally entertain at the old location?
There's probably three people a day that come to the police department.
I mean, I'd like to.
No, they didn't call them.
They do. I mean, if somebody needs a police report, we email it to them. Trash report, we email it to them. Unless they have a reason to see someone, then I'd rather, you know, someone go see them and then come to the courthouse anyway.
Have we mitigated against further potential damage at this point? Is it, we're not going to get any outbreaks and mold or anything at this point?
At this point in time, we have, we brought in, we paid Serpro to come to clean the building. And we have done mitigated the rest of our ability to do.
Have you seen that bill yet?
Yeah.
What about the new sheriff's department? Have you spoken to the sheriff or anybody reached out? Big as that building is, I wonder if they have a place in.
He offered us a conference room. He had upstairs as soon as the storm hit and our building was flooded. But, to be honest with you, I'd rather not do that.
Sir, you prefer to court out as to the sheriff's department?
Absolutely.
Well, that's the kind of things we have to know. And I mean, you're the one that, you know.
I mean, we need offices. Don't get me wrong. We have, we have four offices that we're using for free. The only expense we've had is we did have to sign a contract to have the kind of internet cable we needed to run there by consolidating.
Is there any type of timeframe that the county building has imposed? Or are they good if we needed to do that?
I think, I think as long as we play by their rules and we're nice little to stay there as long as we need to be. The rooms we're using actually belong to the state attorney's office. They pay rent for them. And the county and state attorney's office is allowing us to be there free of charge.
I think I agree with the police department maybe not moving ahead with it. But, I think we've got to move ahead with City Hall. And that's where everybody comes to see, you know, what's, whatever reason. And it doesn't need to look like it looks now. I can tell you that. It just looks terrible. I'm ashamed to have people come in, even though we have a storm, if we don't fix that for them. And I think we're falling down. But, we're not going to get a City Hall in the next two years, three years.
And the carpet's been ordered up, Mayor. It's placed to be installed.
You know, I'm inclined to go ahead and do what City Hall needs. But, I'm also inclined to let the chief and them stay where they're at for now, until we decide.
I'm okay with that. A couple of you have asked me, and I don't know if this is the proper venue or not, but, I mean, we got a city building on the other side of that door pushed down to shove the police department. Can you?
Right. Right.
Well, I mean, your opinion to me holds heavier than numbers and everybody sitting up here, me included. The last thing I want to do is not approve this bid unless you are saying to me you're fine where you are. And let's, let's put it on hold for six months or a year.
If you're asking me my opinion, which sounds like you are, and Mr. Ashbrook has a valid point, if, just say, to finish this building, I'm talking about painting, air conditioning, flooring, there's no furniture in it. I mean, even if you get it done, if we're not buying furniture, it's just going to be a nice, pretty vacant building. I mean, you may, you may be talking $100,000. Do you want to put that in that building? If you do, then do it and we'll move back into it.
My only reason for waiting, guys, is there are grants out there that we might be able to get it paid for by some of these FEMA grants. You know, maybe that CDL loan will cover it as well. But, right now, we're taking this straight out of the general fund. Am I right?
Well, portion of it from the insurance.
Right, yes. That's right.
I'm fine, but we don't hold.
As long as you're comfortable, chief, I'm fine. I'm fine. As long as you're comfortable with where you are.
The biggest issue is the public, you know?
What, what we take?
They can, they can come see us when the courthouse is open. They just have to come do a different, I guess. You know, I mean, you know, our officers work out of their cars. They got printers and computers. You know, there's just a couple of us that actually mail.
You might be in the building. We only have one most of the time on the road. And I don't want them in the building.
Me either.
Yeah. Every now and then, we have overlap of three or four hours. We have two. One of them's going to be sergeant or lieutenant. So, hey, if you're good with where you are, I'm good with saving a hundred grand.
The pricing is going to stay the same if we don't do the police department, right?
Yes, this is just, this is just, this is just a police department.
Oh, this is just.
Just a City Hall, yeah. City Hall, all we got to do is replace the department.
Okay. So, this is already including what they've already done and bid it on.
This is just a police department, Mayor.
Okay.
City Hall's getting a little bit.
Yep.
And I would like to recommend that for the board to structure this such that it'll be tabled. And we will review this issue with insurance, who seems to not be providing adequate coverage. And then we can reevaluate that later.
Motion to table until we come up with a financing idea.
All right. You have a motion? We can have a subject.
Second.
Need further discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Question carries forward.
That's all I have.
All right. Questions for the chief?
Chief, they're all going to have a toy giveaway at the elementary school again this week. When is that? Friday or Saturday?
It is Saturday.
From 5:30 to 8:30?
Yes, sir.
For all y'all in the olives, you know anybody, you got some kids, they're going to be bringing a bunch, 5,000 or more toys, something like that. So, please show up at the elementary school at 5:30 on Saturday.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Mayor, I think there may be, I think someone may have the information on that. Is it?
The toy child that someone's talking about, is that the thing that's, this Christmas in Port St. Joe event?
Go on up.
The Christmas in Port St. Joe event, is that what you're talking about, at elementary school this week? It's on Thursday, 5:30.
All right. We missed in the voting. Thursday at 5:30.
The junior service league, just past March?
I am, I am. I'm not sure.
Mr. Wes Atkins was telling me about.
This is a bunch of toys being brought over from Oliver.
Yeah, December 20th.
So, that is Thursday.
That's Thursday. Yeah.
Okay, everybody. Thank you for listening, Mayor. It's Thursday at 5:30.
I'm glad I didn't show up on Saturday.
I am too. All right. Michelle?
Just wanted to thank everyone for their help with the Christmas parade. Had a lot of very positive comments. People enjoyed it. It meant a lot, too. I think both the spectators and those participating. But, I appreciate you participating in it. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to add, I felt like I had the best card of the commissioner. And if anyone would like to contest that, they can figure out a way to contest it. But, I think I had the best card.
Oh, I don't know.
Well, I didn't have a card. I had a G.
So, well, there you go.
Well, my candy was better.
That's true. I did run out of candy quite quick.
Anything else, Michelle?
Nothing.
This time, we'll go to the public. Again, we have a three-minute rule. Anyone doesn't know about it, you have three minutes. At the end of your three minutes, if a commissioner okay's an additional three minutes with a second, then we'll give you three more minutes. So, this time, anyone from the public wish to speak. Come on up firsthand.
Mr. Mayor?
So?
Could we please have people sign in when they come up to speak?
Again, will y'all please sign in when you come in?
Claire Morris with the 1304 Marvin Avenue. I'm speaking on a couple of things. Congratulate, I mean, there's so many things that we thought were true before Michael, that we found out painfully were not true after Michael. But, I think the adopting of the flood plain rules, it's a good idea. I mean, I think it's going to make us safer. Some of them, put them in practice. It's going to be painful, implement them. Thank you. Good to say it. It's going to be painful. It's, it's going to be a change for all of us. But, it's a learning process. And I do believe everybody will be safer with these new guidelines. I know when we built our house, both real, worked closely with my husband and the new, all the standards that were in, the house came through, roof was fine. Those standards worked. And we went up a little bit higher than we had to, and that worked. So, I mean, there are a lot of things that we've learned. We didn't have damage, but other people and helped other people. And I think, too, the way the communities come together, you're talking about the toy drive and the Port St. Joe Strong, people coming together and helping each other and seeing the needs and seeing what's going on and all the, you know, everybody working together. The town's getting there. It's looking a lot better. It's looking good. I know it's a long way to go, but I think real positive. What I wanted to also talk about is the park. We hit on the debris pickup. When Michael came in, a surge came in, it did come straight down 13th Street because it didn't have any houses to block it. You know, I mean, the poor people that they were. But, it did come down and it went into the park. And mercifully, it did not come up. It came to our doorsteps. It came to our back fences. And the debris that was these people's homes, it was their garages, their front yards, their yards. It did settle in the park. And we have tried to clean up a lot of, a lot of the trees and different things. And I know the guys have worked on the one side, on the trail side, and cleaned it up and done a lot of clean up on the ball fields and stuff like that. But, there's a lot of debris on the other side of the, on our Marvin side of the park. And a lot of it, stuff that washed over, I mean, we got nightstands and cabinets from people's houses. It was very sad trying to, we're trying to pick up some of it. It's been really wet. But, it's not been picked up. And we've been trying to keep quiet about it because other people have a lot bigger needs. But, we were, we heard a rumor that the trash, the debris would not be picked up in the park where it is. And.
I'm motioning to give up. One, second?
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
And I was just wondering, a lot of the stuff is sitting there. And I know it's wet, so they can't go back there. I mean, water's sitting. We've had enough rain that they can't. But, we've heard a rumor that it's not going to. And all of that stuff's going to need to come out to the road. And I just wanted some clarification. gonna need to come out to the road, and I just wanted some clarification, if, when it gets dryer.
I think you gotta divide it into two groups of debris.
Yeah.
Debris that just ended up in the park.
Right.
Because it came between the park and, and the bay.
Yeah.
And then the debris that people took from their property and carried it to the park.
Sure.
Now, my feeling is, we'll pick, we're gonna pick up the stuff in the park that is just from the bay, but we're not gonna pick up the stuff people took from their home or shop and carried it to the park.
Okay.
Uh, because they could've picked that up and carried it to the road.
Okay, so that's a hard fest, that it will not be picked up. I mean, ours, we didn't have anything. I mean, God.
Right, right.
So, but we do have, there are dressers and things that wash there that are, we try to keep it over from limbs and stuff that came. We didn't have trees, you know, we didn't have any trees. We cut the trees down. So, we didn't really have, it was there, and it's pushed up, so, I mean, we need, I think the people along the area need to know, somebody needs to sign and say, hey, if it's stuff from your yard, you need to separate it and get it to the front.
Right, like everyone else did.
Yeah.
Like I did with things in my backyard.
Right.
I had to carry it from the backyard. I didn't have a city park that I could dump it on.
Right.
I had to carry it to the front where the trucks can access.
But on the other side, they did do that too. They luckily had a trail, and they did go down the trail, and they picked up their appliances and on corners because of the trail.
There's a way that vehicles can...
Right.
Can go down there, that other side.
So, I think just maybe the information telling that, you know, I mean, if they look at what's behind our house, they don't know what came, what washed in and what didn't, and there's, I mean, we don't have tons of household stuff. You can kind of say, okay, they do.
Right, you can tell. You can tell that come out somebody's shop, and they just cleaned out the shop.
I think then a notification and tell people, maybe give a notice to the people that are on that park and say, here's, you need to move it while they're still here moving it and they're being reimbursed, the city can, you know, it's being paid for.
A few of those folks, Mr. Claire, were told that last meeting.
Yeah.
I wasn't.
I advised them to call Samaritan's Purse. If there's stuff in your backyard that you need brought to the front.
Right.
They're awesome. They're rock stars.
I think, well, you see, I think a lot of the people have done that, and some people, you have two groups, like we said, people that didn't really have a lot of stuff to come out and people that did, and I know they can't get back there for whichever because it's so wet. I mean, there's no way for it to be...
Right, that's another whole issue that we discussed last meeting.
So it is, well, but they can't see the last meeting. I don't think there's a video available for the last meeting, but we didn't see it, but I think just notification, I'll try to pass the word to the people that, so their household stuff will not be picked up on the park. It will have to go out to the front.
Yeah, if they just picked it up from their property and then just put it there because it was easier to put it there.
Okay, but sometime they will come out on that side.
Mr. Claire, just...
When it dries out.
When we return the first of the year, you know, tenth street, it's part of our plan.
Yeah.
Behind the softball field, field one, which is that side, uh, we have to remove all those trees and debris. It'll be at that point, but we'll gather, we'll gather what was washed in from the stone up to Thirteenth Street, which should be our exit point.
Great.
At that time.
Okay. If it dries out.
Well, no, we're gonna have, we don't have a choice. It dries out, we have to get down there to it, so, but that'll be the time, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else in the public? Right over here. Follow your hand.
I will not require three minutes. I forgot to sign in. My apologies. Uh, for you that know me, sometimes it seems like I'm quick to complain, but I wanna be just as quick to compliment, and, uh, for those of you that know where I live, um, I had minimal damage, even though I'm right by the water, because we had built excessively, or we bought a house that's twelve feet in the air, so I had minimal damage, and what I'd like to compliment is, uh, it's Mr. Creel and the building department and Willie and Kelly and all the folks that work down there, because they enabled me, as an individual, to go there one time, ask all the questions that I had to do, take the packet, come back a second time and get a building permit approved, and to, to do everything that I needed to do essentially in two visits. Uh, I went to the county, um, and they had a lot of questions about what I was doing. They acted like I was the first person they had seen that was trying to do that, but we worked through that, and then, uh, I started the project, and, uh, I missed, uh, an inspection. I wasn't complete, and, uh, Willie, uh, worked on his schedule to accommodate me and came back. So, as a, as an individual citizen who's trying to repair and trying to move forward and, and trying to do everything by the rules instead of asking forgiveness later, I've actually asked for permission and done everything to the best of my ability, I would like, uh, the board and the staff to know that I appreciate everything that the building, uh, department is doing and the individuals in there, and it's absolutely working, and if you just go and get in there and communicate and listen and understand, at least for me, uh, I was able to, to get everything done, and I'm almost complete with my small project, and although it was very small, I'm thankful for that, but please, everybody know that, uh, for me, that was a success story, and I wanna thank everybody present, uh, for the opportunity to, to be able to do my work and get it done effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All in the back.
Come on in the back.
I didn't show up at six o'clock. I called City Hall yesterday evening, and I said, "Mr. Commissioner, me, six o'clock?" I said, "Okay." He said, "We got it on the way outside, Jim?"
Yes, sir.
I called City Hall in person by phone, that's what I told him. I just had to be in the backyard, saw the trucks up here. Yeah. All right, the, uh, November twentieth, I believe, I'll be here. What responses are as far as Monica? I know the city came the next day, and, uh, they got the sewer capped it off, took care of yourselves on that. Trespass warning was given for city property. That's all I've heard, except the generator. I still, those little ankle biters, they were in my yard while they go. I left the gate open, here comes three or four of them. What we gonna do? Put a truck, put a generator in my truck just by the house, that you hear what it sounds like? I think what happened. Then I go down to the sheriff's office. Uh, between me and Jason McCrone, we've called in a lot of times. On December fourth, Officer Van, Herden?
Here they are.
Advised them to turn it off and use a smaller generator. We think that, can't even hear that thing. Uh, December fifth, the one 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 five number was outside, called nine eleven. Didn't want to, but I did, but there was no recording of the log when it came to my house, or eight to five down the street. One night, we saw pickup truck down the street, they ran and go, come down, go back, that's what I was doing, stop. Then the last time I called, uh, Officer Dickey told me that, uh, there ain't nothing we can do. We're still in, uh, emergency mode. I said, "You got to be kidding me." I know the governor extended it, but, uh, like I said, he was using his generator stuff and his dogs and his yard and everything before the storm. It's been a month. I get tired of him, that, that dumb generator. Is the generator exceeding the noise level? Do we have a noise level on this hearing, ma'am? No, I don't. I'll be going under nuisance order, which he obviously said clearly.
I wish the health department would have this more.
I went down, saw the health department. Same thing. Y'all said the last thing, we're gonna turn it over to our city attorney. Okay. Went to health department. Oh, we're gonna turn it over to our attorney. There he goes, live in my neighborhood.
Did we do that inspection on the house that I ran about, Jim?
Uh, did, Mr. Burke, he did go over and do the inspection. To my understanding, he did, uh, issue another citation for accumulation, because I don't think he's done any cleanup after the storm.
Have they been issued any kind of citation for violation of the, what'd you call it, the nuisance order?
Mm-hmm. Not recently, not that I know of.
Chief, do you think that falls in the, in the guidelines of meeting requirements and being cited?
It, it may fall under the guidelines for Richie, for code enforcement to do something.
And that's what the nu, uh, as far as the noise issue, that would fall under code enforcement?
I don't think there's anything that gives the, the police department any authority to do anything with the generator.
You know, Walmart?
Well, Chris, do you think that there's something that we can use that you have come across? I know you researched it as well. Uh, I guess my question is, what would you recommend that we do at this point?
Oh, you don't wanna know what I'm thinking about. Oh, and be within our rights. Yeah. Well, I'd love to give a gas full of sugared water, uh, gasoline and sugar in it, but you can't do that.
Yeah, but we both know that you were in this profession for a long time. Extend the motion to extend.
Second.
So, I mean, we have to, and you know where I stand. I'd, I'd like to handle it old school too, but...
Well, actually, with that, and I know that, that we're still in emergency mode, but you was doing this before the storm.
Can we make, can we pass a, an ordinance within the city of Port St. Joe, and I guess, Adam, this is a question for you. Can we pass an ordinance right now that precludes the use of all generators after, or let's say from sunset on, uh, unless a permit is issued by the city of Port St. Joe, with the understanding if anyone is in actual need because they're in a camper or they're in a tent, then we would issue that free permit, and by doing, and we will not issue a permit to one oh three Monica Drive. Uh, let them, uh, come to get the permit, we deny it, and then if they run that permit, we now have a violation of an ordinance we just created, and we make the, uh, the fine substantial, because I'm, I'm tired of dealing with this too.
I'm tired of the dogs too. He lets them out about three times. He chased one lady next door to me. She had to take some trash out to the can, and four of the little ankle biters are out there chasing her around. I've been throwing firecrackers out in the backyard. When they hear it, they haul butt back to the house, you know?
Are they paying the fine, like when Richie cited them? Are they paying it? Well, then, I know that we can at least start moving towards an arrest warrant or bench warrant signed for failure to pay, and, and if no one is in the house because they're in the county jail, they don't need the judge. Uh, I think there is things that we can do to, uh, at least send them the message that we're going to, uh, take this a little more serious than we have in the past.
Even the backyard, it's couldn't be cleaned it up yet.
Would it be an arrestable charge for not paying that code enforcement?
I don't think on a civil matter, our attorney may be better suited to do that.
It's a, it's a civil violation, isn't it?
I'm sorry, Chief, hearing, I didn't interrupt you. I provided the board, along with city's manager, a memo, suggested options to arrange it, and I'm trying to go back and find that memo now, uh, but certainly, if all steps are followed, ultimately, um, you, violations, if they're properly, um, notated and marked, um, may be punished by a fine not to exceed five hundred dollars in prisonment for a term not exceeding sixty days or both. Um, if you look at large statute one sixty two point two two and the Port St. Joe municipal code one dash one five, there are options there, um, and I think, um, the key will be, our code enforcement needs to see the memo I laid for and let me know if there's a question. I think there are options that will, um, put some added pressure on these individuals, um, that I set forth in the motion, which the board has a copy of, uh, and hopefully abate it. Now, as far as adopting a, an ordinance for the generator, I would highly recommend not doing that, uh, for a number of different reasons. I think there are other routes to go about handling the situation, um, and if code enforcement's not clear in my suggestions in that memo, then I would suggest that they need to call me, because I, I have no idea if there's an issue or something that we need to flesh out with them to make it clear if they don't contact me.
The only other recourse I see is the health department coming in there. The city capped off the sewage. I mean, they dug it up and capped it off the next day after the meeting. I said, "Okay, all right. Where's this solid waste going?" That was my question. Did the health department, it's a question to you too, where's this solid waste going? I hadn't smelled it yet, thank goodness, but between the generator and ankle biters, it's rough over there.
Well, I wish we had a simple answer to say, if we're gonna do this, and then the problem goes away. There is no simple answer, but I assure you, we're not gonna let it lie, um...
Well, I called animal control, and they'll come over there, they're back inside the house, and ain't gonna do nothing to do.
Yeah, we don't even have that in the city, right?
Contracted with, with the county. Yeah, so that's not gonna do any good there.
And the health department doesn't know we've capped off the sewage?
Yeah, I told them.
We need to see if we can get them back over there now.
I'm just curious what they...
Who are you dealing with at the health department?
Oh, short and long later, it's about the last time they cleaned it up. And the city did excellent job on cleaning it up, uh, before the storm, and now it looks even worse.
Can we get the health department to come to our next scheduled meeting and give us an update on one oh three Monica Drive?
We, the day that we actually kept it, uh, me and Mr. Grantland did call and, and reported to the health department, so they were aware of the exact date that we...
Let, let's get them here where the public has the opportunity to ask them questions, find out why they're not doing it.
Well, I did ask the question, and they said they're consulting their attorney.
Maybe they consulted him by now.
I hope so.
I can tell you.
Thank y'all.
We'll, we'll meet you to the next meeting.
We all wanna solve this problem, we just don't know how exactly.
Mayor, one thing, we'll think about the next meeting. Our next meeting falls on January the first. We need to make it see, and I forgot about that earlier, which you wanna do with your next meeting, if you wanna cancel it, or what you wanna do with the January first meeting?
Yeah, I think we need to cancel it.
Nothing.
We're gonna go meet on the first.
No. We just gonna meet on the third Tuesday, January?
That's okay.
Next month? Just have one meeting?
And if we need something, what we can do, if something comes up in the meantime, we can call it. Yeah, we call it special.
All right. I need a motion. Cancel the next meeting?
Motion.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries forward. Our next meeting will be on the third Tuesday of January. Anyone else in the public? Nobody else in the public? All right. Mr. Harper, I'll start with you today.
Uh, I had a few things. We've discussed, uh, one oh three Monica Drive. We've discussed the Seventh Street flooding issue. Uh, I had a question about the, uh, I, as my understand, we're not having a, uh, city, uh, staff employee Christmas gathering, uh, this year, correct?
Yes, sir. We, unfortunately, didn't get to that.
I was excited to go, but now, I understand we're not gonna do it. So, my question is, is do we do anything for the city employees in lieu of having a Christmas party? Um, you know, what, what have we done in the past?
Nothing.
Nothing. Can we do something? Uh, maybe get a ham or a turkey and give it to the employees?
Tell the, to the board.
I mean, the funding for the party, I'm sure would cost quite a bit of money.
What have y'all feeling, Murphy, what they...
What is the feelings of the board in regards to a turkey or a ham?
Okay, I, I support that. The, the funding traditionally was never a budgeted item. It was, in fact, I think one year it was scrap metal.
It was.
Oh, really?
It was, yes, sir.
Okay, well, maybe we can sell some scrap metal for the turkeys and hams. I would ask that, uh, we buy them locally from our Piggly Wiggly and, and see if we can do that prior to when they are off for Christmas.
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
I'll buy fifty.
You'll buy fifty. There's fifty right there. Does anybody else in the public wanna buy fifty turkeys?
Do I hear seventy-five?
Nothing we need.
Fifty's pretty close to fifty.
Somebody back in my head.
We got fifty more.
You want, you get turkeys, we get ham, or fresh restaurant?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna raise this. Uh, we'll check with, uh... We're gonna, we're gonna raise the, uh, we'll check with, uh, Rafield Fisheries, maybe they'll do that. I know they record it. No, but yeah, however we raise the money or we budget the money, um, let, let's do that. They have a choice, turkey or ham, or we buy one or the other, doesn't make a difference. That's all I have.
Is that a form of a motion?
Uh, yes.
While you're there?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion on the turkey and the ham, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for it.
Get their checks before they leave.
Yeah, get the check.
Check, just question to get it cleared.
Yeah, we clear it, Mike.
All right, anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
All right. Commissioner?
I think we've talked just about everything that I had to talk about. I do want us to not lose steam though and focus on, uh, some of the things that we learned, Mayor. Some of the positions that we might need to fill, some of the grants that we can go after. Us independently probably need to go and debrief with Jim and, and Mike McCour and let them know what we know. It was extremely valuable time spent. My head is still processing all the information and I'm hoping that they'll do more of these, that's been very helpful. But that is all I have.
All right, Commissioner Lancer?
I've been working with this guy about, uh, helping, um, people with the roofs, people that didn't have any insurance, can't get an SBA, um, grant and, uh, or SBA loan, sorry. And, um, it's, it's going, um, pretty well, I think we're gonna do like, throughout the whole community, try to get a few citizens, senior citizens, um, veterans, disabled veterans or things, um, things like that. I just wanted to put it on record that, that I'm working on that and that, um, um, eventually, um, I think it's gonna come together. And, um, also, um, I wanted to remind everybody that it's updated resource director is at the health department. Uh, you call the health department and they'll let you know. And everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Uh, one more time?
I, I've got one last thing and, uh, I don't know how this is gonna be received, but I'm just gonna throw it out there anyway. I think we have got to make it as easy as possible right now for people to rebuild, at least for the next year, possibly two. I want us to start collectively thinking as a board as some things that we can do to make the process easier. Uh, I've seen some investors come into this community, uh, and take a look at what it would actually cost just to get the infrastructure set up and it's, it's unbelievable to add 50 modular units, you know, could exceed 100 grand, you know, just in tap fees and things of that nature. I've talked to Jim, we don't see eye to eye on this, but we can agree to disagree. And, uh, I think that we need to look at, how can we make it easier? How can we make it more attractive for workforce housing to come into our community? And if we can do anything, waive tap fees, uh, even for, for a period of time, I'll ask for it later. But let's start thinking about how we can, how we can make it more accessible for people to rebuild and buy a new land and build. And that, that is, that's the last thing that I have, Mayor.
All right. I just wanna say to everybody, y'all have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. This city's been through a lot in the last couple of months, but, you know, we're gonna make it. I got faith in everybody that lives here and they're gonna pull together and help each other and we're gonna get the resources we need to take care of everything that needs to be taken care of, just have the faith. And I think we'll get it done. While you're there? I need a motion to adjourn.